There we go. We're on the air. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 12th, 2018 meeting of the Town of Chelmsford Planning Board. We are being recorded by Chelmsford Telemedia. Thank you. And I guess we're ready to go. We have a fairly full agenda tonight. First up is an A and R, 61 Carlisle Street. Is there anybody here on that? Okay, then we'll push that off. Some people may not have gotten the word that it's a 6:30 meeting tonight. The next one, 152 Turnpike Road, there's a Bayard applicability. I believe we actually passed this last time around.
We did.
And I think we just need to go over the wording, make sure it is what we agreed
Kevin?
Mm-hmm.
Under facts, number eight, how did we get 27.5 parking spaces required?
Pretty sure that's what their plan shows.
I wonder what that half space looks like.
I don't know.
That's my point.
I'll double-check that.
It's either 27 or 28, but it's not 27 and a half.
I'll check that.
Okay.
Man, was that number eight under facts, you said?
Yes. What? I don't know how they get a half space.
Actually, my copy, unless you're in number eight, I'm seeing half a space.
Yeah.
Under facts.
Really?
Really?
On the second page.
Because mine says per section 195-115.a, prins one, 27 and a half parking spaces are required.
Well, you know, seeing as we approved 20, that's really pretty much irrelevant anyway.
Well, but it goes on to say that a minimum of 80% of the required spaces have to be provided, which means that...
Which points to 20.
It's probably 25, but I don't know. 80%, 20 would be 80% of 25, not 27 and a half.
Right, so if the 27 and a half are allowed, we're clearly...
They only ask him for 20, they get 20.
Yeah, they're well within...
Well, well under it, right?
Yeah.
No, the problem is, they have to provide at least 80% of the required...
They have. They have, even if it's only 27.
If it's 27, they have not provided 80% at 20. If it's 25, they've provided 80% at 20.
Oh, okay, I see what you mean, yeah.
That's...
5.6 parking spots is 8, take, is your 20%. So take that off of 27 or 28, that gets you down to 23.
Yeah.
22.
Yeah, and they're saying that they want to go less than that.
If you took it out to 27, you'd be right on the mark, so...
I don't...
Okay.
I'll double-check what...
Why don't you double-check that?
Find out what that's supposed to be.
Close enough.
Yeah, I can, I'll certainly, you know, you can send it over for signature once we sort that little piece out. Is there anything else on here that anybody notices that we need to deal with?
No.
Okay. Then I would say, go ahead, you know, sort that piece out, and then get it over, and we'll get it signed. Very good. Next on our agenda is a continued public hearing on zoning bylaws, in particular historic preservation and reuse, and a proposed change to terminology concerning dwellings.
From the...
So at the last meeting, Nan, she was tying, you were tying back to historical with the RM, right, to make sure that they were intertwined?
That's correct.
Pretty much the RM was okay. It was just, you wanted to make sure it reflected in the historical, right?
So there's another article, wait a minute, Article 19? Now, let's see what happened to it. Evan and I have been going back and forth on this all week.
There's no relation between 18 and 19.
All right.
They're totally separate. There's no relation between the two.
So, does 18, as currently presented, have any changes to the definition of dwelling?
18, no. 18 refers to dwelling units. It refers to three-family dwelling units are defined, a family is defined. This bylaw in and of itself, in addition to mentioning three-family, revises the use table, which is on page, the third page of the article. So by amending the use table, and specifically calling out conversions to three-family per the proposed article, it's now its own itemized line in the use table. So there's no need to define what a three-family is. The bylaw does that, Nan's language does that. The use table further codifies it. So I think we've resolved that issue. So this bylaw stands on its own. It does not rely on...
Okay, that's a good thing.
...other definitions to support what its goals and objectives are.
Does this discussion have anything to do, any impact on 195-149 proposed, which specifies two-family conversion?
So what Nan did was, basically relocated the existing 195-13...
Yeah.
...into this bylaw. And then if you look on the last page, the last page will be proposing to, let's see, where is it? Did I get cut off again? Can you bring up? Scroll down.
Yeah.
Right here. So for some reason, your printout, your hard copy, did not capture the final action within the article.
Okay, that's all I was concerned with. All right, that's fine.
Which will be to delete, in its entirety, 195-13, because it's relocated in this article as 195-149.
Yeah, but I noticed 195...
And it's critical that that gets deleted as well.
Yes, that's right, yep.
As part of this article.
Yes, it's in the article.
Got it. Okay.
So the only other thing just to cover is Town Council has reviewed this, the version that's in front of you and on the screen reflects Town Council's review. He had just some, I didn't provide you his review, but he did bring to the, he asked some questions, essentially. One referred to on page, section 195-152b, last word maintained. He was asking if there was a time limit on that, and then he suggested that if the bylaw doesn't contain a time limit, that the restriction could cover it.
Okay.
Under 195-152h, he added, "or the longest period allowed by law."
Okay.
This speaks to whether it's a state preservation restriction or a local restrictive covenant. Simultaneously, I think last night, the Historical Commission recommended to delete any reference to a state preservation restriction...
Right.
...and only go with a local.
Yeah, I was there.
So this, the version that's a hard copy this evening makes that change. Other item that's in this article is that in cases where, it's section, let's see if I can just find it here, section 195-155, second paragraph, you see a reference there to section 195-8. What this is covering is that, as you know, many single-family and two-family non-conforming structures currently go to the Zoning Board of Appeals...
Right.
...for modifications. So rather than send them to both boards, in cases where that provision is triggered, this bylaw will capture...
Okay, so it'll bring them to the planning.
Exactly. So it'll be one-stop shop, and then the Planning Board will be able to cover both provisions of the zoning bylaw. And then that was it for Town Council review. So the, and then, working with Nan, in order to create separation from Article 18 and 19...
Yeah.
...we added a new section, 195-156. So what this does is, and it may need to be wordsmithed a little bit, but the essence here is that this article, historic preservation, is a standalone, self-sufficient article. It does not rely on other zoning provisions. And to Donald's question, although it doesn't say it, what the intent of this is, is that it supersedes all other zoning provisions, and where there may be conflicts, that the provisions within this article...
Are controlling, yeah.
...the whole precedent. So that speaks directly or indirectly, depending on your perspective, to this notion of, is it RM or is it not RM? It's dismissing the rest of the bylaw and saying, for purposes of historic preservation provisions, the four quarters are within the article itself.
Good. Well done. Okay, any comments on the board?
I have, yeah, I have at least one comment. In that both Council and the Historic Commission recommended removing historic preservation restrictions in lieu of maintaining restrictive covenants only. Article 195-152, as presented in this draft, item, the first sentence, strike historic preservation restrictions or, and in item B thereunder, strike historic preservation restrictions and replace it by restrictive covenants.
Thank you.
Right.
I think it captured the others.
Yeah.
I think you got all the rest.
I'm not real sure that 156 provides the clarity that we're seeking, but it's a start.
If you view it as a placeholder and work with Council between now and...
Yeah, the intent is that specifically RM requirements, multifamily requirements are not applicable to it. And the reason is that multifamily applications require an excessive amount of documentation to be, and engineering to be presented to the approving board. And the whole idea here is to provide some financial incentives to preserve these buildings. And there's no significant exterior work involved with these conversions.
the...
The only other thing that I thought of from this, just because it's going through my head right now, that this supersedes everything else. We haven't lost our one-year restriction to try to incentivize them to do it, right?
In the demo?
Yeah.
No, I think that lives elsewhere.
That's not part of the zoning provisions.
All right.
So it wouldn't, this supersedes zoning provisions, and that's outside the zoning provisions.
I just, when I saw that, I was...
It's worth asking.
Worth checking. Worth checking.
Worth checking.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, this is a public hearing, and if there are people who would like to get up and say a word or two about the historic preservation and reuse and the ancillary dwelling terminology change, now's a good time to do it. Anybody? Anybody from the Historic Commission that wants to say a word? I think we sat down with them last night, several of us. And, oh, it's my neighbor.
Good evening. Brian Strip, 90 High Street, member of the Historic Commission. And we did meet last night, and I think I just wanted to reiterate how pleased we are with this document, and how much it covers, and what it does for preservation in the town. And so we're just here to support it. So we want to thank you.
Thanks a lot, Ryan. Anybody else? Are there any, no comments on the Article 20? Seeing none, I think we could close the public hearing on this.
Would you like a motion?
I would very much appreciate it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing on the zoning bylaw for historic preservation reuse, Article 26.
Second. Moved in second. Any more commentary? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we need to decide what to do with it. I think...
Are we going to have any discussion, or do you want me to go with a motion?
You can discuss if you like, or we can go right to the motion. I think we're, I've seen it, I'm fine.
Okay, I move that we support this historic preservation article at town meeting.
And could you add the, also the Article 20?
As altered, as altered. And Article 20 also.
I have a motion?
Donnie, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, that gets our support.
Let's go back to 61 Carlisle.
Yeah.
Presenters.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you for spotting that. Now, back to 61 Carlisle. Is there somebody here on that?
Let Harvey go.
There he is.
Good evening, Chairman Reisbeck and the board. My name's Attorney William Harvey on behalf of 61 Carlisle Street, to request an endorsement of the A and R Plan Number 650.
And it, well, I think we've all got pictures on our little machines here. Can you bring it up, come here?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what's, well, zoning's not really relevant to this, but it's about, it's about 40,000 plus, 45,000 square feet. How do the frontages work out?
Can we have a 16,000 square foot lot as an occupancy?
I don't think that matters for an A and R, though.
Oh, that's, oh, frontage, frontage, frontage.
Frontage and taxes.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm losing my mind.
Yep. I think he got everything he needs.
I think it's all here. Can you, have you looked this over, Evan?
I have not looked at this one.
Okay.
Motion to approve the A and R?
Second.
With no determination as to zoning?
With no determination to zoning.
Endorse the A and R.
Endorse.
Wrong word again.
Okay, I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Attorney Reisbeck and the board. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Have a good night.
My pleasure.
Let me get this going for you.
Okay. Next one up is a new public hearing on 9 Barton Hill Road, and I suspect we have some letters somewhere. Certainly, we need to...
All right. Slide that thing over to them.
Okay, you want to slide that thing over to them?
There you go. There you go. Okay. All right. Okay, there you go.
Okay.
If I don't, well, we'll get there. Okay, let me read the legal notice first. Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna try it?
Yeah.
Do we?
I think so, yeah. That was all part of the other thing.
Okay, let me read the legal notice. The Chelmsford Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, September 12th, 2018, at the town offices located at 50 Bell Ricker Road, Chelmsford, Mass. on 182 Ford, to consider the application of Walter Belleville for a two-lot definitive subdivision located at 9 Barton Hill Road. The applicant requests definitive subdivision approval and applicable waivers under subdivision control law and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in the town of Chelmsford. The project calls for the subdivision of property into two lots. Lot one containing the existing single-family dwelling, and lot two will create a new buildable lot and use the existing driveway for access and branch off. Site is located in an R.B. zone. The site is approximately five acres, as shown on Assistant's Map, 109 Block 421, Lot 1. Copy of the proposal is available at the planning board offices located at town offices, 50 Bell Ricker Road, and may be viewed Monday through Friday, 9 to 4. All interested parties, please comment in writing or be present at the meeting. Signed, Michael Reisback, Chair. Okay, we got that out of the way. Now we're official. Okay, this is from Fire Prevention, Captain Katsoufis. I got a letter to read. Okay, Planning Board members, 9 Barton Hill Road subdivision. Water supply appears to be adequate. Hydrant locations shown on this plan are adequate. The Chelmsford Fire Department requires a hydrant within 500 feet of each building for manual firefighting operations. Hydrants and fire protection equipment shall be free from landscaping obstructions. Access for firefighting apparatus and emergency vehicles shown on the plan is adequate. Fire access roads and turnarounds shall be designed with swept path analysis using AASHTO bus 45 turning template. Fire apparatus access shall be designated by registered engineer to withstand the weight of fire apparatus. Snow storage shall not obstruct or impede fire access roads or turnaround. The applicant shall submit three proposals for street name to the Fire Chiefs Office for approval. The applicant shall, in addition, submit an application to the Town of Chelmsford E911 Committee for address numbering through its coordinator, the Town Clerk, Tricia Zouris. This office would approve of these plans with these conditions. I ask the board to make this letter part of the approval process. Captain, signed, Captain Katsoufis. Okay, what do we got here? We got another letter, this time from the Center Water District. Okay, this is a short one. The Chelmsford Water District's only concern is the distance between the end of the water main to the existing and proposed dwellings. A representative for the proposed project should contact the Water District, the Chelmsford Water District. The Board of Water Commissioners, upon approval of the proposed project, would request the following three items to be part of your order of conditions. One, water is for domestic use only. Water saving, two, water-saving devices should be utilized throughout the facility. Three, ziriscap landscaping should be implemented to minimize water usage. Signed, Richard Tancino, Distribution Manager. Okay, what do we got here? Board of Health, no concerns. Okay, Police, no concerns. DPW, dear board members, this office has reviewed the plans by PM Flaherty and Associates, consisting of three sheets. Dated July 25th, 2018, as a result of this review, this office has the following comments. Department shall be notified when work on-site is to commence in order to arrange for inspections. Any revision to the drainage system shall be submitted and approved by this office. Stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be prepared and followed as described. Copies of any inspections or other reports done in accordance with the plan shall be forwarded to the Engineering Office. Four, the drainage system shall remain private. The owners will be responsible for routine maintenance of the entire drainage system. Five, a site as built shall be provided upon completion of the work on-site. As built to include a letter from the engineer stating that all stormwater devices have been built to satisfy mass stormwater standards. Provide all supporting documents and calculations. The as-built shall be from a ground survey and submit an AutoCAD and paper form. Six, all unsuitable material for any discovered in the excavation for the infiltration system shall be removed and disposed of in accordance with state and local regulations. We have about 12 conditions here. Seven, the proposed sewer work will require permitting and application fees, excuse me, applicable fees from the DPW Sewer Division for connection to the municipal sewer system. Seems to be a contradiction in the letter, where the drainage system's going to be remained private, but we got a condition on connecting to the public sewer system. I'll just keep reading. Eight, road opening permit is required from the Chelmsford DPW Highway Division for work within the Barton Hill Road right-of-way. Nine, trench permits shall be filed as necessary per 520 CMR 14, Chapter 82. Ten, a bond of 10,000 shall be established with the town prior to release of any lot. Eleven, a street sign and private weigh sign as directed by the E911 Committee shall be provided at the intersection of the private road and Barton Hill Road. Twelve, the design engineer is in the process of completing design and drafting revisions to the plans according to the recommendations of this office. If you have any questions, please contact this office at 978-250-5228. Signed, Christina Papadopoulos. Okay. And we have, I believe this is in a butter letter. We'll find out in a minute. This is from Darrell McCrensky. I have reviewed the application of Walter Belleville for a two-lot definitive subdivision located 9 Barton Hill Road. I am in favor of the proposed plan. My house is located at 72 Byham, and the new buildable lot will be directly behind my existing house. I think a common drive from 9 Barton Hill Road is preferred to a new proposed driveway cutting between my house and 68 Byham Road, which would negatively affect the value of my property and the other property on Byham Road. Additionally, the driveway off Byham would be very steep, and traffic is an issue near the intersection. Signed, Darrell McCrensky. That concludes the letters.
Okay. Sir, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rue. That was sterling. My name is...
What?
My name is Pat Flaherty. I'm a surveyor and a civil engineer, and I'm here for Walter Belleville and his daughter, seated with us. And, um, that picture on the, on the screen right now shows, uh, shows the existing house. I culled it in a bit on this, this one that the Bellevilles live in. And it shows a cul-de-sac, which doesn't exist right now, that's a proposal. Um, there wasn't enough frontage on Barton Hill Road for two house lots, so we put in that private street, our cul-de-sac, to get the, the required 150 feet of frontage for each lot. And there's an existing driveway that goes from Barton Hill Road right now. And it goes, uh, it goes up and around and into the Bellevilles' property, to the house on the back. This entire lot is grassed, it's all lawn. The only trees are along the stone walls and in the back of the property. So it's a very nice-looking property. And, um, part of this proposal is going to be to sewer the Bellevilles' existing house, it isn't sewed right now. And, um, we're going to run a sewer line connecting both houses to a manhole and bring it down to Barton Hill Road. And I noticed that the Water Department was concerned about a hydrant. We have a hydrant proposed down toward the, toward Barton Hill Road, and Mr. Belleville has already decided that he wants to move it closer to his house to improve the water pressure. So he might have been a little bit ahead of the Water Department, or I was a little behind here by putting the hydrant too far away from the existing house. So, uh, what's going to happen is as you go up the driveway, there'll be a fork in the existing driveway, it's about 15 feet wide, this driveway. And, um, there's going to be a, a small turnaround for the fire trucks and then a parking lot, uh, a parking area next to the house. And actually, if you go up on the plan, that's the, Mr. McCrinsky's property there, right next to the North Arrow. Is there. Right next to that is a strip of land that belongs to the Bellevilles. And they originally thought that they would do a driveway there, but it is really too steep. And, uh, and it, it would be, it's better to use existing driveway. So, um, the drainage is going to be handled from the new house, it's going to be handled by a, a dry well hooked up to the, the roof drains. And along the new driveway, we're planning on putting in a stone trench to handle the water. And I'm in the process of coming up with some calculations for the town engineer for that. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to hear them and try and answer them.
Okay. Well, let me pass it around.
Let me start, uh... Okay, so this stuff is going to public sewer?
Yes, there's a sewer system right on Barton Hill Road, so we're going to sewer it.
Can you check your letter and amend it and give me a new one, Christina?
So, um, what was stated was that they need to connect to the public sewer system. However, they do have some proposed on-site infiltration for their stormwater.
Okay, so that's what you're getting at.
They're two different things. So the stormwater is to remain privately owned and maintained, and the sewer will connect to the public sewer.
Okay. I missed that, okay, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Uh, next question. You said the driveway is about 15 feet, I, I thought we were doing 20 feet, 20-foot driveways, or did I miss the boat?
Well, this, this is an existing driveway, and, um, it's, it's worked very well. It's got, uh, large radius curves and large trucks have actually gone up there to fill the swimming pool. The Fire Department feels that this is adequate.
Okay, so Fire Department feels they're okay with this?
Yes, they, they wrote that in their letter.
Okay.
It's a pretty open site, uh, pretty clear, and they have lots of room to turn.
Are the power lines around here someplace, do they cross near the property, or?
No, no power lines, uh, on this property, no.
Got this, a different fix on it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
And there's no, uh, additionally, there's no wetlands on this property, it's, uh, pretty nice.
I'm all set, Mike, for now.
Okay, Glenn?
I think I'm good with it. I'd like to see the driveway just stay just like you got it there, instead of trying to widen it out, there's no reason to do that, and it's... You're just going to take away from the property, it looks nice, I know where it is, it's, it'll be a good project.
Christina?
Yes?
As far as the stormwater drainage, that's private?
Yep.
There'll certainly be an agreement, and what would be required for them to do with the stormwater?
So, well, they'll construct it on, on their own property, develop an easement, and, um, what else would they, would they need to just agree to, um, continue to maintain it?
Continue to maintain it and, um...
So, so, our decision to say that? Our decision will not, will not dictate that it needs to be a homeowners association?
Okay.
Right.
But our decision will be very clear that the road and the infrastructure is private in perpetuity. If it becomes a problem, it's, it's a private matter. So I know you show the easement on the plan, um, but, you know, the, the shared ownership and maintenance and snow plowing, that's something that, it's a private matter, and the planning board doesn't, doesn't take ownership of that. Because it, you know, the, why would the planning board want to get it, get in the middle of a private matter between two, two property owners?
Thank you.
I think it's a good idea, um, there's a lot of room up there. I just had a question, is there a lot of ledge up there, you guys are going to have to blast to put the drainage in, in the septic?
Well, uh, no, the, the big machine can take most of it out.
Yeah.
And, um, there's a septic system up there now behind the, uh, in front of the house. And, um, if we hit ledge, we're going to have to just go around, but there's, there are a few spots that I saw a little knob coming out, but, uh, Walter has dug there to put in some drains, and he hasn't had any problems.
I'm good.
I guess, I guess the only question I have is, is for the homeowners. And that is, have you given any consideration to this access easement in terms of your long-term sellability of that land? I mean, you're designing something in here that is, uh, not terribly favorable in terms of resale. Okay.
Yep.
You've considered it.
He's, he's got, the bank usually looks at it as if you got access to a public way.
Yeah.
And he's got frontage from my past, one of my past lives.
Yeah.
And he's got frontage on that private way, all the way, you know, halfway in the circle, so he has, I say he, the new house owner will have access to a public road. So it shouldn't affect his saleability.
Yep.
He's not landlocked.
No, he's not landlocked, it's just, he has somebody else's driveway across his property.
Well, it's a private, it's a private, what, yeah, but...
I mean, it's basically unusable property.
Wouldn't take much just to put, just to write down as an easement for it, just to...
Well, it has to be.
Safekeeping down the road, right?
Yeah.
I got one more question while I'm, while I'm thinking of it. With it, the driveway is really not going to change. What was, what was the need for the $10,000 bond?
Oh, um, infrastructure improvements.
Infrastructure improvements on...
They're installing a sewer, they're selling a sewer line.
The tie-in into the public way.
Tying into the sewer?
Essentially, opening the street.
And extending it up the private way.
So it's the, it's the, the public infrastructure that's part of the project, that's what the bond covers.
Just standard with every private way.
Yeah. Well, I, I get it, but it, they're not really changing, they're not really going to change the road.
No, no, nothing to do with the road, nothing to do with the road. The actual connections into the municipal system.
But is it, isn't that, isn't that done by your, by your sewer permit?
It's just what we, it's just a standard procedure that we would ask for that.
Yeah.
The bond.
No, I'm, I'm just looking at it as, it's a house that he's, he's putting aside for his daughter, they're, they're not, they're not like they're selling it and trying to make money on it, they just... Look at that, they'll get their bond back.
All right. Anything else, folks?
Just, did we want that note, is there a notice on, a notice on here that an access easement like Glenn was talking about, or? Should we ask, uh, Mr. Flaherty to put that on there?
Yeah, I think on the, on that first page, it's, uh...
It's on the first page?
Yeah, it's shown as, uh...
I can't flip mine over.
Yeah. It's, see the curve in the road there, there's an access easement around it.
My eyesight isn't that good to see that. Okay, it says access easement?
Yeah, yeah, access and utility easement.
Okay. I'm happy.
Mr. Chairman, one of the other issues, and I apologize for not reviewing this prior to, um, several months ago, you recall, we had a, uh, same engineer had a project, I think it was Old Westford Street?
Yes, the one on Westford Street?
Uh, slightly different configuration, but one of the similar issues was you need to have access from the right-of-way to the buildable portion over your own act, over your own frontage. So, in this case, lot one will not have access over its own frontage to the buildable area. So that is going to require a variance. That, I believe that's how we, how, how we've been interpreting the provision since then. So, the applicant can revise the plan, or we just put a, put a condition in the decision noting that we believe it requires a variance in order to comply with zoning.
Okay.
I don't think it's anything that need, that, that would, that would warrant delay of planning board action.
That would be a Z B A.
It would be a Z B A, correct.
Okay. Yeah, we might want to note that, just to cover all the bases.
Is that, is that your understanding, Mr. Flaherty? Recollection?
My understanding that is, is if it's, is, is that it's possible for him to connect through his frontage. He isn't, but it's possible, so I would say that...
I think that determination is made at the zoning board level.
Okay.
But I'll work with Mr. Flaherty as well as the, the building commissioner's zoning officer, and we'll, uh, we'll clarify this.
Very good. Okay. This is a public hearing, I believe.
Yep.
Do we have anybody who, yeah, like to speak? Oh, okay, I really, we're getting, we're getting, we have some more public hearings coming up. Okay. Uh, anybody like to speak on this issue? On, on nine Barton Hill Road? Ah, we do have somebody.
We do have somebody, you're right. Oh, Linda, hi, Linda. Linda Decker, uh, five Barton Hill Road. And my property actually abuts this.
That's, that's a little, that chunk over there on the right, over the right?
There I am, hello.
Yeah.
And, um, this is all family-owned.
Yeah.
Okay, so my brother lives at the top, I live at number five.
Yeah.
My daughter lives at number one, my niece, hopefully, we're rebuilding, at number, if I'm, if I'm five, then that would probably be seven.
Okay.
Okay? And my son lives at 30. It's all family-owned, and we're like the Waltons, you know, good night Jim Bob, good night Plum Bob, that's all I can tell you. So, I mean, this, we're not selling it, you know, I mean, I actually just sold number five to my daughter. So it's, it's in the family.
Good.
So this property at number five is, will be almost like 60, over 60 years in the family. Not going anywhere.
Okay.
With Walter's children, not going anywhere, my children, not going anywhere. We're going to be here for a while. So we are absolutely in favor of having my niece and my nephew, my great-nephew, on property with their own little house.
Wonderful.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Come again, tell your friends.
Uh, do we need to continue the hearing?
Well, we gotta get, Evan's got to...
No, I, I had stated that I didn't think that would warrant a delay in board action.
I, I agree with Evan, I mean, that's, that's a conversation to have with the Z B A.
I'll write the decision that condition saying if applicable.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
Give you a motion to close if you want.
Okay, I will accept it.
Motion to close.
And second? All in favor? Aye.
Motion, give you a motion to approve, what's that?
What's that? Okay, so the public hearing is closed now.
Motion to approve.
I got a second over here. Motion to approve and second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed. You're all set, thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your, for your help and your consideration.
Okay.
Unwards and upwards.
Unwards and upwards.
Colleen, I gotta sit out this next one.
Okay, uh, let me get, let me get, uh, which one are we doing, Chief?
We're doing 24 Misty Meadow.
24 Misty Meadow, let's see what this brings us, okay. Uh, I got a pile here, you may, you want to read some of this?
Yeah, we can, we can pass it around, I'll be glad to read a few.
Yeah, why don't you, uh, why don't you take that pile?
Okay.
Let me, let me get started by, uh, for Mike here. I'm going to read the legal notice for, uh, this next hearing. The Chumsford Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, September 12, 2018, at 7:00 P. M. At the Chumsford Town Offices, 50 Bell Ricker Road. Okay, if we're settled down, I'll continue. To consider the application submitted by Thomas B. Boyle for an open space subdivision located at 24 Misty Meadow Road under the subdivision control law and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in the town of Chumsford, and special permit under Chapter 95, 195, Article, uh, 18, planned open space development. The project calls for the construction of new roads serving six lots with an open space development. The site is located in the R B Residential Zoning District. The site is approximately 41.1 acres as shown on the assessors map, 81, posso 321, lot one. Copies of the proposal are available at the Community Development Department Room, L L 01, Town Offices, 50 Bell Ricker Road, may be reviewed Monday through Friday, 9 to 4. All interested parties invited to comment in writing or be present at the meeting and public hearing per order of Mike Ray Zbick. Okay, let's get on with the letters. Uh, this one is, uh, from the Fire Department, Captain Katsoufis, uh, uh, hang on a second. Captain Katsoufis. Okay. Dear members of the board, water supply appears to be adequate, hydrant locations shown on the plan are adequate. The Chumsford Fire Department requires a hydrant within 500 feet of each building for manual firefighting operations. Hydrants and fire protection equipment shall be free from landscaping obstructions. Access for firefighting apparatus and emergency vehicles shown on the plan is accurate. Fire access roads and turnaround shall be designed with swept path analysis using A A S H T O bus 45 turning template. Fire apparatus access shall be designed by, fire apparatus access shall be designed by a registered engineer to withstand the weight of fire apparatus. Snow storage shall not obstruct or impede fire access roads and turnaround. The applicant shall submit three proposals for street name to the Fire Chief's Office for approval. The applicant shall, in addition, submit an application to the town of Chumsford E 911 Committee for address numbering through its coordinator, town clerk, Tricia Zouris. This office would approve these plans with these conditions. I ask the board to make this letter a part of the approval process, Captain Katsoufis. Okay, yeah, we got another, another letter, short one. Chumsford Water District has concerns with the deadending of the water main for this proposed subdivision. Representative for the proposed... Representative for the proposed project shall contact the Chelmsford Water District. The Board of Water Commissioners, upon approval of the proposed project, would request the following three to be part of the order of conditions. One, water is for domestic use only. Two, water-saving devices should be utilized throughout the facility. Three, zariskate landscaping should be implemented to minimize water usage. Signed, Richard Tancino, Distribution Manager, Chelmsford Water District. Okay, this is Board of Health, no concerns. Police, no concerns.
Okay. I have a letter here from the DPW. Dear Members, this office has reviewed the site planned by Howard Stein Hudson Associates consisting of 12 sheets dated August 16th, 2018, and a supplemental data report dated August 2018. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. This department shall be notified when work on-site is to commence in order to arrange for inspections. Any revision to the drainage system shall be submitted and approved by this office. The stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be forwarded as described in the report. Copies of any inspections or other reports done in accordance with a plan shall be forwarded to the engineering office. A site as-built shall be provided upon completion of the work on-site as-built to include a letter from the engineer stating that all stormwater devices have been built to satisfy mass stormwater standards. Provide all supporting documents and calculations. The as-built shall be from a ground survey and submitted in AutoCAD and paper form. Confirmatory testing shall be performed in all areas of infiltration for stormwater management guidelines. Testing shall be witnessed by the Chelmsford DPW Engineering Division. All unsuitable material, if any, discovered in the excavation for the infiltration system shall be removed and disposed of in accordance with state and local regulations. This project provides an NPDES Construction General Permit. A final copy of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan must be submitted to the town, as well as filed with the EPA prior to beginning any site work. The proposed sewer work will require permitting and applicable fees from the DPW Sewer Division for connection to the municipal sewer system. A road opening permit is required from the Chelmsford DPW Highway Division for work within the Pine Hill Road and Brindle Road right-of-ways. Trench permits shall be filed as necessary per 520 CMR 14, Chapter 82A. The design engineer has received design and drafting review comments from this office. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Sincerely, Christina Papadopoulos. Okay, I have a letter from Paul Sarategui. He's 55 Thomas Drive. I'm writing regarding my concerns on the development proposed on Brindle Road. Here is my list of issues with this development that I wish for you to address and respond to. Thank you. In no particular order or level of importance, here is the list of my concerns. One, wetland removal, replacement and disturbance of the forest inhabitants. The Chelmsford news is riddled to the posting pictures and sighting of animals, some dangerous, bears, bobcats, mountain lions, do we have mountain lions? Foxes, et cetera, roaming our streets. The disturbance of these wetlands will only contribute to more wild animal sightings and perhaps attacks on residents. And while new wetland is being recreated, animals are creatures of habit and habitat, how are they to know that the new area is being developed for them and that they need to move? Water, for the last 20 years, 20-plus years I have lived in Chelmsford, there has been a ban on water use. Given these additional homes, plus the newly added apartments and the proposed development on Route 3, can Chelmsford sustain and provide for this addition demand for water and other resources? And if so, why can't I water my lawn? Speaking about other resources, can the waste treatment facilities accommodate this additional demand? Again, consider the new commercial development proposed and added apartments and housing developments built recently. Additionally, it is my understanding that the folks who live in Brindle and at the end of Thomas Drive use a pump house to move waste from your homes to the town sewer system, and that when power is lost, this pumping service is not available, thus flushing water, flushing and water use is restricted. If this is so, this matter should be addressed and corrected before adding more people to the system. Traffic, these houses will add, also add more traffic to your neighborhood. Our roads are already being used as cut-throughs for those wanting to avoid Route 3 traffic. Thanks, Selectmen, for adding all those traffic lights to the center and main roads, but I digress. At minimum, these houses will have two cars each. The increased traffic will create a greater risk to the runners, walkers, the elderly who are out and about during the nice weather, and to the children playing. If this development should pass, I would ask that the developer install sidewalks on Brindle and the entire length of Thomas Drive that will ensure the safety of those in the neighborhood, e.g., walkers, runners, elderly, and children who walk and wait at the bus stops. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Paul Sarategui. Okay, this one's a page and a half, fairly lengthy. Yeah, I'll take care of it. Misty Meadows Development. The residents of Brindle Road have been discussing concerns regarding the proposed residential subdivision at 24 Misty Meadow Road, and I have listed some of them in the bullets below. Our overriding concerns include the existing hydrology, the risk of greater flooding issues, and the responsibility for future issues. We are also very interested in understanding how zoning and wetlands requirements are properly met, so that there is no negative impact to adjacent residences and the community at large. To this end, we need a deeper understanding of the development plans and look forward to collaborating with the Town of Chelmsford at the upcoming Planning Board and Conservation Commission meetings. We are seeking narrative material that augments the engineering drawings and provides other project details. Here are some of our questions, concerns, and requests for the project. Confirm that the sewage from the new development will be gravity-fed, no grinder pumps. Where will the sewage system tie into the current sewer system? Confirm power for the new development will be underground, no new telephone poles. A description of any digging to Bridle Road. Documentation that the condition of the current road and property lines will be restored to their current condition after construction. Limitation of all construction to certain hours during the day and agreement on access points. Agreement on what activity will take place along the 8 Brindle Road and 7 Brindle Road property lines. Agreement that the current conditions of these property lines, including the stone wall, will remain intact. Regarding the 425-foot cul-de-sac at the Brindle Road, no through access. Brindle Road residents want the access to be from Pine Hill Road, as access is already required from Pine Hill Road to one of the houses on the site, in the plans. The plans are for six, single-home, open-space subdivision, 2,400 to 2,500 square foot homes. Please provide the frontage and lot sizes. There is currently a lot of drainage from the back of the Livery Road homes to the area of Lot 1. The plans show drainage off all sides of this elevated lot. Residents are concerned about drainage backing up in the property, in the backyards of these Livery Road homes and the side yard of 8 Brindle Road. Lot 1 will be built 38 feet from the 8 Brindle Road property line. Please provide the elevation relative to the elevation of 8 Brindle Road to confirm that drainage will not create more wet conditions on 8 Brindle Road's property. Lot 1 is the most problematic. The residents would like the developer to eliminate this home from the plans. Residents want no tree cuts, want a no-tree-cut zone of approximately 20 feet between the existing abutting homes and the proposed homes. The other five homes will be spaced around the wetlands. This will disturb some of the wetlands and need to recreate wetland space. The current residents would like the Conservation Commission to do a site walk and walk the site with us. The development plan is bigger and wetter than others in the past. We would like the Conservation Commission to confirm that a comprehensive analysis of vernal ponds was done on the entire site, and to confirm if there are any vernal pools. Also, we want to understand how the Conservation Commission is approving the wetland delineation. We are very concerned about the hydrology and storm drainage pattern. We would like a third party to review the development plans and the wetlands. One of the biggest concerns is how the developer plans to address stormwater and flooding as a result of the wetlands in the area. It looks like there is a stream to the south that flows away from Brindle Road. That suggests that the terrain is generally sloped away from Brindle Road, or Brittle, wrong, I'm sorry, not Brindle, Bridle. We want proof of the appropriate infrastructure to ensure that stormwater is detained and drained away from the existing neighborhood. We are concerned that the developer is proposing to construct so close to wetlands that could potentially result in permanent alteration and deterioration of the wetlands through stormwater flooding, increased exposure to sunlight, removal of vegetation that has been absorbing water and providing wildlife habitat. There has been an extensive history of water and flooding on Bridle Road. There are underground springs that result in above-standing water in the spring and runoff down Bridle Road. Please see attached photos to see the magnitude of the existing deficiencies. We would like the Town of Chelmsford Engineering to assess the underground hydrology activity. See photo on next page. Below are a list of requests. Have an easement between the new lots and the old lots and all the wetlands with a requirement that it remains undeveloped forested land. Detain and drain all stormwater from the development to the southeast. Have ongoing obligation to monitor the wetlands to ensure continued functionality. A public easement with trail maintenance obligations between the end lots allowing for access to the public lands. Construction of a sewer pump station at the end of the cul-de-sac so that the sewer can gravity-flow and bypass our grinder pumps. Remove Lot 1 and increase size for the other home lots. Repave Bridle Road at the conclusion of construction. There are some pictures associated here, which you can look at in the record if you like. It shows sowing some standing water. And I believe that's it.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, I was very loud. Katie Unright with Howard Stein Hudson. I'm here tonight on behalf of Attorney Doyle, who is here tonight with his wife, Joan, who owned the property at 24 Misty Meadows Road. Misty Meadows is a 15-foot right-of-way that encompasses essentially a gravel driveway that goes throughout this property. The plan that you see before you today shows the entire 40 acres of the parcel. It has a strange configuration. There's actually a one-acre lot right smack in the middle of it, Mr. Stott's lot, which is a little over one acre, which has access from the gravel driveway that comes up from Pine Hill Road. There's also a two-acre parcel off to the east, which is owned by the Hamlets, and that's a two-acre lot, which they also gain access from this gravel roadway that comes from Pine Hill Road. When the property owner came to me originally with this parcel, we were looking at first and foremost to delineate the wetlands. Before we did anything, we had Greg Hockmith with Williams &amp; Spirages, who you've seen or know of, he's done a lot of my wetland flagging, was out there for many weeks determining the wetlands' conditions out there. The reason for that was because, obviously, we know that the site is wet, we know that there's resource areas out there, and we wanted to make sure that any yield or any plan that we provided, whether it be conceptually or definitively, addressed that issue first and foremost. So Greg spent weeks out here, essentially looking at both vegetation and soils. It took him a very long time, because this land is historically haved, so you're not going to see the typical wetland plants that you might see out here. He had to go around with an auger and physically find each and every location for the wetlands. So you can see the entire 40-acre piece has been flagged for bordering vegetated wetland and also mean annual high water, because three of the channels that run through there are also considered rivers under the Rivers Protection Act, which are also then protected within 200 feet. A lot of this will be discussed at the Conservation Commission, but I wanted to kind of get you to how we got to this point. The first thing we looked at on the entire parcel, based on the property line survey and the wetland survey, was yield. This is a colorful plan, just to show you how essentially we looked at coming up with six lots. So this is a crazy-looking plan. Each color is a different lot, essentially that meets the RB zoning district bylaws. So we went off the existing roadway that exists there today, Misty Meadows, or the common driveway essentially that exists there today, and created frontage lots and area lots that more than exceed the RB zoning requirements, and the table is here on your right. We also are below the thresholds for wetland filling and below the thresholds for work within the riverfront area with the six lot. So moving forward with the six-lot configuration, we looked at this and said, you know, we don't want to develop it this way. And I offered another solution, or a different option, to the Doils. And that being, looking at your planned open space requirements and what that means to this piece of property and what that means to the land moving forward. I think that the special permit characteristics that the Planning Board have for an open space subdivision is to provide an attractive, convenient, efficient neighborhood, promote conservation of open space, and efficient use of land in harmony with natural features. What I did then was look at, well, where would it make sense to remove essentially the development away from the majority of these rivers, majority of these wetland areas, and provide the most efficient use of space while also trying to maintain the neighborhood feel that's out there? And that's how we came up with this plan for these six lots. One of those homes is actually the existing farmhouse that exists there today, which would be taken down as part of this, so it'd be a net increase in five lots. There's one existing home that would be demoed as part of this. It made sense when looking at the configuration of the wetlands and the river, and the proximity to the existing roadway or Misty Meadows, that it would make sense to essentially not try to improve that any further. Bridle Road comes right to the edge of the property, and there's a significant portion of open space and upland area in that area. And we were able to lay six lots out with very limited wetland impact. In this area, we have just over 1,600 square feet of wetland impact. The crossing, although over an intermittent stream, will be designed to stream crossing standards, which again will all be discussed at the Conservation Commission, and essentially goes over an arm of drainage that reaches out from the major wetland body and captures the drainage from Bridle Road. So what happens is Bridle actually goes downhill all the way to two catch basins right at the property line, along the edge of this property, and goes through a pipe through an easement and is dumped actually on this property at the end of that wetland finger that comes out. So essentially, we're looking to span that piece of wetland. There's a lot to the left there, Lot 1, and then there's five additional lots as you go around the cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac is designed per the subdivision rules and regulations for the Town of Chelmsford. And each lot, although as part of the planned open space district, is allowed to be as small as 12,000 square feet with a minimum frontage of 50, and setbacks as little as 12. These lots are, there's only one lot that's just below 40,000 square feet. So when you look at this in the overall scheme of the neighborhood, it doesn't look out of place. There's not a lot of small 12,000-square-foot lots along here. We are using reduced frontage in some areas, and that's to reduce the length of road. The road here is just about 550 linear feet, and would come off the end of Bridle. So that first lot on the left, these are significantly large lots, and all of the information about these lots is on the cover sheet as far as the setbacks, the amount of upland area, the amount of wetland area, and the amount of frontage that each of these lots have. So to efficiently use that space and basically leave the other 26 acres as open space and protected under the bylaw. The planned open space development requires a lot to be 10 acres. Obviously, we have 40 here. The maximum amount of units shown has to be on the same amount of land that the conventional plan would show. Here, you've noticed there's probably, there's two extra lots here. One lot we have carved out to basically open up a yard area for the Stotts if they see fit, if they would like to work with us to acquire Lot 1, to give them essentially some land area that's outside of the CR. We would like that ability, and we've also left a piece of land at the edge of the Parley Farm, if that becomes something that would be appropriate to have on that end. And we've not included those two parcels in the yield. If those two transactions don't happen, or if those are not things that are willed by the abutters, those become part of the conservation area and part of the conservation restriction moving forward. So we'll hopefully have a decision on that before the end of this. Out of the 40 acres, the entire project is on 7.6 acres. So I think as far as the planned open space and leaving a significant amount of open space here is certainly achieved. The open space remains unbuilt upon. The utilities are allowed to go through the open space per your bylaw. And essentially, there's a couple different options as to what we can do with that land, and it's outlined in your bylaw. With, basically, in speaking with the Board, we're allowed to discuss what happens with that remaining 26 acres. There's a couple of different options as we move forward, but it must be recorded with a restriction that's in. a restriction that's enforceable to keep it open space in perpetuity. So that's extremely important. And moving forward, this is just a close-up of the area that we're looking at, so you can see how the six lots would be laid out, and you can see underneath faintly where the existing home is that would be taken down. You can see the grading around the lots. The water table is high in some of these areas. We did do some pretty extensive soil testing in this specific area and in the area of the detention basin to figure out where our water table was and what the material was so that we knew how fast the water would drain back into the ground because of the impervious surfaces that we're creating and also because of the tree cutting that we'd be doing here. So understanding the way hydrology works, we're looking at an existing condition of what's out there today, and we're comparing it to a proposed condition. Essentially, we've split this into three design points, although ultimately, the lowest point in this entire area is essentially where Misty Meadows, where this property hits Pine Hill Road is the lowest in this area. All the water comes through here out of all the neighborhoods around there. And then it goes under Pine Hill Road, under the highway, and across to Hunt Road, and ends up in the wetland behind 50 Hunt Road, across from Woodcrest, et cetera, so and into Beaver Brook eventually. So this entire area drains through these wetland systems. Another reason why we kept the development over to the western side of the property is to maintain those drainage discharges. So we're not affecting any of those flow patterns. They're all flowing straight into the wetlands where they do today, and they're wrapping around this parcel and making their way all down to the bottom essentially where our driveway, Misty Meadows, hits Pine Hill Road. In speaking with the fire department, we prepared with them, for them, a turning radius, but as I said, this turning plan or this pavement that's shown here meets the subdivision rules and regulations for the Town of Chelmsford. They were happy with that plan and the hydrant that we're providing. We did go back and forth a little bit with your sewer department. They would like to not see grinder pumps in this area, obviously, because the Town of Chelmsford needs to take care of those. So we have shown that the sewerage from the five homes to the back, everything except for Lot 1, would go through an easement down Misty Meadow and out to Pine Hill Road gravity with connections being left for Stott and Hamlet for the future because everybody out here right now is still on septic. So there are no septic systems out here yet, or there's no sewer out here yet, sorry. So we have to talk to the Conservation Commission about that. Certainly, bringing the sewer down Misty Meadow to Pine Hill is gravity-fed, but we're also going to be in very close proximity to the wetlands in those areas where if we went up Bridle with grinder pumps, we would not. So we have shown it on these design plans, and that will be before the Conservation Commission, would be to bring the sewer gravity out to Pine Hill Road with the exception of Lot 1, where it doesn't make sense to cross the wetland with the sewer for that one single lot, they would have a grinder pump and tie in to Bridle. The water department has also commented regarding looping of the water, and we will be meeting with them offline to determine if a loop is necessary to be brought from Bridle through to Pine Hill Road. And again, we start, Conservation Commission obviously is a big, a big part of this. We filed concurrently with Conservation Commission, and the opening of that hearing will be next Tuesday evening, so obviously, we understand that tonight would be continued. We're here. We've heard a lot of feedback through the letters that were received by the board, through your planner Evan Belansky. I've also received a few phone calls and am aware of some feedback that was on the Chelmsford News page. So certainly, tonight, we'd like to get any questions out there. Hopefully, I've answered a significant amount of them in the presentation and calmed some of the fears based on the size of this development. I don't believe you've seen an open space development probably since I did Buttercup Lane off of Proctor probably 15, 20 years ago. So it's been a while since we've had a very conventional subdivision plan through here. So certainly, if you have any questions or concerns, we'd love to hear them tonight so that we can hopefully get the plans in, in better order for the next meeting.
Good.
With that.
Thank you.
To you.
Thank you. I guess at this point, we should pass it around, get our initial questions out, and then we'll open up the public hearing. I believe, yeah, this is a public hearing. Oh, no, wait a minute, this is a...
It's a public hearing.
Yeah, it does, a subdivision is a public. Okay.
Katie, I'm looking at your lot plan and the elevation plan on it. Obviously, you're moving a lot of dirt around. Do you expect to be bringing in fill?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. I'm not concerned about the wetlands displacement and redevelopment because as far as I'm concerned, the Conservation Commission will deal with that. They're, they're much more experts on that than we are, and whatever we approve will be contingent upon what they approve. Is there an expectation? I'm going back and forth between drawings here, I'm sorry. Lot 9, is there an expectation that that would be expanded into additional building lots at some point?
No, absolutely not. So Lot 9 is the, is the 26-acre piece, and as part of this approval, that will have to be in a deeded restriction for open space to only allow certain things to happen in there. So I believe you're allowed to do things like agriculture, horticulture, passive recreation, some pathways, but no, as a part of this permit, it would be required to be in a deeded restriction regardless of who ends up holding that, which we could also discuss during, during these meetings.
That's all I have at the moment.
What's the Lot 7 going to be? Is that just going to be empty too?
Lot 7 is... That's the one around Mr. Stott's property, correct?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Before we go to the public.
Right.
No, before we go to the... I just need a break.
Um, not yet.
We'll just go around once and then...
Oh, okay, sure.
So these are just overlays to... I'm going to... We'll be talking to these.
Thank you.
So Lot 7, excuse me, Barry had done this overlay, so I, it is helpful to have something in front of you rather than just put it up on the board. Lot 7 would be either, in working with Mr. Stott, conveyed to him, or it would become part of the conservation restriction. So no, that would not be, that would either be in the process, deeded to Mr. Stott, or become part of the CR before we're done with the public hearing process. So no.
Done?
Yeah, so Katie, thanks for the presentation. There's a lot going on here. You have 41 acres, you're going to build on seven plus. Of the six lots, two of through six will be on sewer, however, Lot 1 is going to require a grinder pump. And is Lot 1, I mean, obviously, you want to maximize as much as possible. What's the significance of Lot 1? Is that, is that truly necessary for this project?
Absolutely, absolutely. So for 40 acres, having only six, five essential building lots because one home is being taken down is a very, obviously, a very small development. So Lot 1 has a significant amount of area. It is 86,000 square feet, so it's well above what's required even in the RB zoning district. And we're meeting the conventional setbacks because we're, we're close to the border. So when you're within 100 feet of the, of the exterior of the open space development, you actually have to meet the requirements of the RB district, so we're in excess of the 25 feet that would be required to meet on that side also.
I think I'm fine for now.
We've got some questions initially just on the workings of this. I'm going to call it the existing driveway for Misty Meadows. When this is, when that construction is completed, that will be closed off?
No. So that is in an access easement with Stotts and the Hamlets, and they have a three-way maintenance agreement for that, and that's how both of those homes receive access, and that would continue. So it wouldn't be improved on, but it would continue to be maintained and continue to access the two homes.
If I'm seeing it right here on my print on the computer, their houses sit between Lot 2 and Lot 3 or a little...
There's, there's, the Stotts' house is here and the Hamlet's' house is here.
So Misty Meadows is the access for that?
Correct.
Another question. Since it's going to be open, when the construction takes place on Bridle Lane Extension, are all the trucks going to come up that driveway? Since you're trucking in a lot of, a lot of dirt, a lot of fill, are you going to take them down Thomas Drive? I know we're ahead, but are you planning to use Bridle, what do you call the road?
Bridle.
Bridle Road.
No, Misty Meadow Lane.
Misty Meadows. So we actually did talk about...
Are you planning to use Misty Meadow Lane as the construction entrance for this project?
Honestly, it would make sense to use Misty Meadow for that purpose, for a majority of that purpose. The reason being is because it's a lot closer to major roadways and the highway. It's an easy trek out Hunt Road to 110. We were talking about it today. There'd certainly need to be some culvert reinforcement placed over the top of that if we were to do that, but it's something that can be discussed certainly moving into the future of this, and it's something that we're open to.
These people are going to have a long way to go to get out. Just looking at that, that's, they're going to have to shag around by Bridle Lane and then Thomas Drive. They're going to have a long ways to get out. Was there any other configurations you thought of to use Misty Meadow Lane more? No?
It, it doesn't make sense when you look at the planned open space requirements and trying to be sensitive to the environment. The wetlands are right up to both sides of that driveway that exists there today. So to expand that would be more detrimental to the resource area than...
What is it, about 15 feet?
Right.
It's about 15-foot driveway? Okay. And you need conservation permits to get, are you going to run all the utilities through there or just the sewer work?
Just the sewer right now. Water department may require us to loop the water through there also, but we're going to meet with them. All other utilities, gas and electric, would be run underground to Bridle. So we would draw, right, and all of that would be required to be underground.
Yeah, okay, so that's, all right. Another question. We're approving this development. Are the owners of this development going to have the houses built themselves, or are they, is this kind of being sold off to other developers? Do we have any idea?
It will be, they are not developers. They are property owners, so they would not be, they would not be developing this themselves. They would be selling the approved plans. One of, one of the reasons that they stayed with this process, they thought very long and hard about selling the 40 acres outright, and in our discussions, it was really important to them to have control over what was approved here before it was sold. So essentially, they're carrying it through the process with me and this board to then sell it as an approved project.
Okay, so I just want to understand this so we can word, when we're done with this, so we can word a decision carefully. This, it would be sold as a six-lot subdivision, not lot by lot. Is that a correct understanding?
That's...
Not going to sell Lot 1 and 2 to build a A and Lot 3 and 4 to build a B?
It could be. It's not being built by the owners of the property, but it could very well, I, I don't know. I can't say that it won't be built as a roadway and one house developed and then lot sold off to individual people to build houses.
That gives me some understanding as to, should this be approved, how to write this up, what we need to write up for the road so that the road is properly finished and all of that stuff. And that's it for now, Mike, for me.
Okay. Well, in that case, why don't we take a very quick break? And then get back here about five minutes.
Thank you.
About 200 years and we would want to make sure that that look is still there and that if it's going to get disturbed that it's put back and looks the same. Also, you know, at being at the end of Bridle Road, that side of the house has always faced trees. We have a lot of concern that Lot One, because of the grading that we see on the plans, is going to cause that privacy and look and feel to be destroyed. Also, some concern about the grinder pump that I just heard about. So anyway, I've been in the home, which I bought from my parents who built it in 1966. I also, you know, have interest in the town development. I worked on the Economic Development Committee and I orchestrated the chelmsforbusiness.com with Evan. I also have Barry here, who's done a lot of research on the bylaws. He's also a homeowner and served on Friendship Park and works on the town library website. So what I'd like to do is just speak a little bit about our requests and Barry would like to speak a little bit about the justification for them. And we'll, I don't think this will take more than 15 minutes or so. That's okay?
Okay.
All right. So like I said, we are in favor of the development and we like the idea of a wooded area. We know it's been well thought out and we just want to make sure that us as the abutters, our, you know, current privacy and, you know, what we're used to is respected and taken into consideration. And one of the biggest concerns too is the current hydrology. We have a lot of flooding, especially after the grinder pumps went in. Yards flooded, basement flooded where they had never before. And so we know that the, you know, the springs come up, they run down Bridle Road, starting in like February, March, and it kind of continues through May. It's very wet. So we wanted to make sure that an assessment was done by the town because I don't think anybody can say exactly what's going to happen when we start doing more digging and moving wetlands around. And especially where all of the homes are so elevated that that's, you know, where's that water going to go? Is it going to come back and make Bridle Road's property wetter and our side yards? And are we going to have water and more water in our basements, kind of thing? So we want to make sure that we're given some time to review all the plans and also request that a site walk be done with us and scheduled so that we can walk it with a conservation commission. And just make sure that the conservation commission is, you know, thoroughly evaluating the impact to the wildlife, to the, and that plans to add more wetlands, you know, are they really going to take hold over time and, you know, stay as wetlands and not just dry up? We also have a lot of concerns about Lot One. You know, it is very close to 8 Bridle Road, which is my property. It also abuts to Livery Road and right now, there's a lot of runoff from two homes on the back of Livery Road that go into this area where Lot One's going to be. So I just think that there's a lot of, you know, chance of water backing up in that direction And we also would like to maintain some privacy with trees. We set 20 feet between the abutting homes. You know, we're not exactly sure what the plans would allow for, but another concern about Lot One, like I said, is it would cause a lot of digging in Bridle Road for a grinder pump to be there. So we'd like to make sure that the storm water is managed. And I think we already answered the question earlier about Lot Seven and Eight, so I think we're good there. And I'm just going to show you a few pictures before I hand off to Barry. This was after the grinder pumps were installed on Bridle Road. This is flooding, you know, that was never there before between the last house on Bridle Road and the next house up. And it also affected basements. This was flooding in the backyard on the other side of the street that came down and, you know, just kept running down Bridle Road. My house is just to the right. It's not in the picture. I think my house and the one across the street are the only ones who didn't have the flooding in the basement, but it's obviously a concern if more digging happens. So with that, I'll give Barry a chance to talk about some of the justification.
Sure. I'm going to talk to this document. It includes what Laura talked about. And you also have an electronic form of this.
Thank you. Could you, by the way, could you identify yourself for the record?
I would be right. I'm Barry. I'm Barry Jefferson from 5 Bridle Road. And what I want to talk to is some items that we discussed as Bridle Road residents.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First thing I want to do is reiterate what Laura said. I think it's, I have some history with Katie Enright through other projects such as Robert Fields. I know her and her company are very reputable. So that helps because a lot of what's going to happen is, is going to be based on trust. You can't cross every T and dot every I. You've just got to hope that people are going to try to do things right. And I think Katie and Howard Stein folks are that way. The other thing I want to point out, because I know there's some people maybe in the room maybe not, who really want this blocked, you know, leave our land alone, let's not, let's not mess with it. There really is an advantage to taking land and getting an easement on it or getting it protected so that other things don't happen. Somebody said it's better the devil you see than the devil you don't. And so, yes, while the activities of this development could cause some problems for us, the benefits could be felt both by us as neighborhoods and the town. So having said that, let me just run through some issues here, some concerns that I've identified. And by the way, Katie and John and Tom, I apologize, I have a copy of this and I'll give it to you before we leave. Laura's already talked about Lot One being a major concern. And I, I'm not going to talk more about what she said. I think she covered it very well. I am going to introduce the possibility that Lot One may be out of compliance with POS development restrictions. And I'm going to have to leave this to you folks of the zoning board to determine it, but the document lays out the thinking of why that could be the case. Basically, I'll try and get through this pretty quickly. I don't want to dwell on it. But if a property in a POS, in a planned open space development is next to a zone like IB, it comes under, there are certain IB restrictions, including yard dimensions. The property at Lot One has 142 feet rather than the required 150 feet front length that would be required if it was an IB property. So the question is, being next to IB, does the, does the frontage come under the restriction of needing to be 150 feet? Read the words from the law quickly. It says, "Building in a POS is proposed to be located within 100 feet of the perimeter of such development," so that would be Lot One. "Such building shall be located so as to comply with the minimum yard dimensions for principal and accessory buildings for the applicable zoning district." And, and my words are in bold, it says, "If the lot frontage is considered a yard dimension, then based on this restriction, there's an issue." If there is an issue, then the next paragraph establishes why you can't grant a variance. I won't go into that except to say that the zoning board apparently has, is very limited under the law as to what variances can be granted. So I'm going to leave that. As I mentioned a minute ago, you have this document in electronic form. I've handed you printouts. You can, you can peruse it at your, at your own time. Lot Three has the same, I present the same argument for Lot Three, except that there are two different dimensions involved. There's lot width as well as, there's lot frontage. So again, eyeball that. Let's make sure we're doing this according to the law. I want to jump to something that was brought up. One of you folks brought this up. I think it might have been Evan. So if you look at Engineering Drawing Six, and it's in Appendix C here for your convenience in this document I just handed out, it suggests it could be a substantial amount of landfill brought in to elevate the new houses to the required levels. So you've got roughly a seven foot plus, you know, gradient. So I pulled out my dividers and I did a very rough calculation, and I mean rough. But if it's even close, it could equate to 11,000 cubic yards or 785 large dump truck loads, which would be, if you add that on top of the, all the vehicles, all the traffic for construction, it would be a huge burden to bring all that down Bridle Road. And there was a conversation earlier and Katie and I have talked about it. It would be, it would be very important to us to have that done through Misty Meadow Lane and not down Bridle Road and down Thomas Drive. There's actually a more important issue there, here, and I think the laws probably have this covered. I'm sure you guys do or will, but it is awfully important. And that's critical that something controlled where this material is sourced. I'm assuming that some of this is going to be coming from inside the land, but a lot of it will be coming from outside. There's a whole story about Love Canal and how property development went up and it turned out that they had landfill underneath them. We don't want, we don't want toxic landfill. So I raise that for the record. I faith you guys will, or somebody will know how to make sure that doesn't happen. So Laura showed you some pictures. Bridle Road has a bad history for storm drainage problems. Back in 2004, when the sewer lines were put in, four houses that weren't having any kind of water problem suddenly had water in the basement. We had sump pumps going in at about that time, that we had a pipe that was running from the house out to the street. And what happened was is that needed to be replaced anyway. And when we went to do so, the fact that the town sewer had gone in blocked us from, from dealing with it, with the new pipe and putting it in. So we ended up with sump pumps. And we pumped the, pumped the water out and it filled up the yard. And you saw the picture, there's one shown on, in the appendix on this, in this document, but it shows the flooding between the yards you just saw. We actually had ducks, wild ducks come and land and swim between houses. And for that to happen, you need not just water, but it has to be there for a period of time. So I actually put in, put in a siphon pump, which is big trash barrel hose and ran it way down into the woods. Managed to get the sump pump water down there so it wasn't flooding the yards, but it was a pain. By the time I got through dealing with the water issues, we spent at least 15,000. The number may be much higher. We ultimately had to have a trench run from the house all the way down into the backyard and, and special drainage pipes put down there to replace what the builder had originally run out to the storm. So one of my messages for this, I don't, I think the DEP actually did it, I assume it was them that did it, probably did the job right. I don't think the problems that we all incurred were a result of bad workmanship on the part of, of the engineers and the people that did the digging. But stuff happens. And in this case, it did disturb the water table. And there was a lot of expense. And let me tell you the saddest moment. It was my neighbor, who's now deceased, his son is here with me. He came knocking at my door late at night and he was in a total panic. I was, I'd been in bed for a while. And he pulled me over to his house and he says, "My basement is flooded. You've got to help me." And was his basement flooded? But I remember coming, coming into the house, coming down and looking down and seeing over a foot of water at the base of the steps. But the sad thing was, when I, when I came down there and sort of stood and looked out in the basement, his son had 105, $145,000 Steinway grand piano there. He was a concert pianist. And that piano is sitting there with its pedals literally under a foot of water. That was a pretty sad scene.
By the way, I'm his son.
And yeah, this is. He's now my piano teacher, but anyway. So, yeah, bad stuff happens. One of the things that is on the list in this document, I don't think Laura mentioned it, but it would be awfully nice if there was a way to fact a way to protect us from something like this happening. And I don't, I don't have enough experience, but maybe an insurance policy, an escrow or something, so that if this development causes some kind of a bad side effect, that we would have something to help protect us from large financial losses to, for correction. So I throw that out in hopes that maybe there's some way to, to work that in. With that said, I think we're good to go. I'm going to scan here quickly to see if there's anything else that we want to talk One thing that did come up early too, so Lots Seven and Eight, as I understand it, Katie, are going to be sold or proposed to be sold for non-development. The question I have is what exactly does that mean, actually a question a lot of people have? So if that land is sold, what can be done on Lots Seven and Eight? And would really kind of like to see something in writing that defines what the limits are for that. I don't want to see a, you know, a gravel pit or, you know, I'm being exaggerating or, but, you know, some industrial operation that takes over and kind of doesn't do things so well. So I, I ask that and I've included, we've got a whole list of requests here. I think Laura's submitted a separate request. A lot of overlap, but I think we've covered. Anything that's been missed that you guys want me to talk about? Really appreciate you giving us the time to do this.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And thank you in particular for the rather nice list of concerns, which I think will be something of a help to the people designing this.
Well, it took us a while to get our heads around what, what it was that was of concern Katie, is this your stuff? These are your notes?
Thank you.
This is Katie. Mike, could I respond to the what could happen to these lots?
Uh.
Okay. That's all right.
We'll have another shot. I know you.
Henry Parley, 135 Pine Hill Road. I am Henry Parley of Parley's Farm. The only thing that my major concern is, we have two water easements that take and come from our fields into some of these wetlands. I've got the paperwork at the house from them being done and they're 1970s with USDA grant and permission from Bill Hennessy to drain into the brooks. I just want to make sure those easements are maintained in the future. And the other question to you, Katie, is the land still underneath 61A and 61F?
Yes.
Have the applicant been asked if they would be interested in purchasing the development?
You have to have a signed P and L, that goes to the town and they've got a prescription. So I, I mean, there's a protocol we have to follow.
Okay.
I've got a question for Henry.
Who's, anybody? Yeah, there's somebody who'd like to say a word. You the piano player?
Knock, knock. My name is Walt Seisen. I live on 40 Abbott Lane, which is at the northernmost section of Lot Nine. So this lady, I didn't get her name, but Nancy, you raised a concern about Lot Nine. I guess about the deeded restriction and so forth, or that, that term came up. And that's, that's my concern because I, I abut that Lot Nine on the northernmost point. So explain to me what that deeded restriction is and explain to me that, or let me know if that lot will ever be built on in the future? So can anybody answer that question?
My suggestion would be we get a written proposal.
Yes. Exactly.
Written description proposal from the proponent.
Yep.
And then we can figure out. I mean, there's all kinds of what-if scenarios if the, if it's sold to the Scots.
Yeah.
As I, as I think I heard earlier.
That's not Lot, Lot Nine is the open space lot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the open space lot.
Well, I still, I still want to see all the covenants and everything as part of the whole protocol.
Yeah. But there's still a lot of what-if scenarios, even under existing agriculture, agricultural exemptions.
That's, that's a good point, Evan, and that's, that was my concern is, I hear a general term like, you know, deeded restriction and all of what else go through, through my head because things change. People change, things change, board members change and laws change. So that, that was my concern. As far as, you know, I need some education on this as well, as far as the conservation scope of the work. I didn't see any stamped environmental drawings from the environmental engineer. I see civil drawings. Maybe somebody can educate me on that, because you're doing all sorts of environmental work. I didn't, I see stamps to PE stamp on the drawing from civil. So.
No, it wouldn't be required. This type of environmental work would not be required. A professional wetland scientist flagged the wetlands and their report is, is signed by a person who's able to flag the wetlands or certified in that, but that is the only environmental aspect.
Okay. And as far as the soil samples, the last question I had, would that be, would those samples in that report be provided to the Conservation Commission?
Yes. So the, the samples, what this, what the soil testing does, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. What we're doing when we do soil testing for stormwater management is we're looking for evidence of a water table and we're looking for the texture of the soil. So it's not a chemical analysis, it's an analysis to show where the redoxymorphic features are within the soils, where the water table therefore sits. And then a texture analysis, which is done by hand, to determine how fast the water's going to move through the soil. So that information is all public record.
Okay.
Just to clarify, all the civil analysis will be done as part of the planning board process by the town engineer. Anything that's related to the wetlands is done by the Conservation Commission, their agent in, in their process.
All right. Thank you. And Evan, with regard to the what-if scenarios, what's the next step with regard to addressing that in, in writing as far as?
My suggestion to the board is to ask the applicant to respond in writing to the two abutters letters as well as the board questions, all the questions that have been, been asked this evening. Once that's in, once that's in written form, then the board can review it and begin to drill down.
Okay.
And begin to formulate conditions that would provide predictability and, and protection.
Because I, you know, my immediate response when I saw Lot Nine, I says, that's a lot of acreage there and land is at a premium and Chelmsford's at a premium everywhere. So I saw that as, it's like, okay, being, being a businessman myself, I would say that's a lot of acreage just to sit there and no one to do and, and no building on it.
Yeah. The deal here is they're voluntarily coming in as a open space cluster.
Okay.
The zoning bylaw requires that significant land be dedicated as permanent open space. So they're proposing that Lot Nine serve as that.
Okay.
There will never be any single-family home development on Lot Nine if it's deed restricted.
Right.
The bylaw allows for certain types of uses that are associated with open space. Agriculture is one of them. There's several others. That's the detail that we need the proponent to, to provide.
Right. Yeah, thank you very much.
If I may, just briefly, we didn't not provide that information for any particular reason. It specifically says in your bylaw that it's the planning, planning board's election as to how this should be conveyed.
Yeah.
Therefore, we want to hear from you what you want.
Yeah.
We don't want to come in here and tell you, we, we don't want to do anything with it. We want it preserved as open space. So if, if that's the case, then we'll come in saying that it will forever be preserved as open space. But the town itself is supposed to work with us in that conveyance and if there's an interest in the town to do something there, whether it be, as Evan mentioned, a public easement to allow for people to enter the site, certainly passive recreation, is there an agricultural need for it? We don't want to do anything with it. So it will be open space. So we're looking for the planning board to give us feedback as to how you would like that area elected moving forward.
Yeah.
I think the planning board should, should provide some input to the commission. If the planning board's preference is that the Chelmsford Conservation Commission holds the restriction, obviously the commission's going to have some detailed say into it.
Right. And they have, they have protocols and they have material.
Right. So it's likely going to end up being a conversation between the planning board and the Conservation Commission, assuming that the town's interest is to have hold of restriction.
Okay. Yeah. Well, let's, let's investigate that in our copious spare time.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Don Benson, 10 Livery Road. Katie mentioned earlier, and it was just also brought up, that some of the lots would be available for possible recreational use. And that could cause additional traffic and parking problems, additional people coming in. And where would the access be for the other use of those lots?
Well, that, clearly that's.
For Lot Nine, that's weren't, Lot Nine, the open space in the bylaw, the bylaw suggests that it be used for agricultural, horticultural, educational or recreational uses. We're looking for direct, we don't want to do anything with that land. We want it preserved as open space. The planning, we are here to work with the planning board as they have to elect and tell us how this lot, in working with us, should be conveyed and for what use. So we're not proposing a recreational use here. The only way that there would be a recreational use here is if the planning board told us there was a need and they would like to see this land as a recreational use, which is not what I'm hearing tonight, so.
Well, it's a discussion that we're going to have to have.
Hi, my name is Marion Hamlet, 40 Misty Meadow Road. So I have two concerns. One is around water. So thank you, Barry, for doing that great calculation for all the landfill that's going to be brought into the area. Right now, when there's storms, the area floods. So we have a lot of flooding on Misty Meadows. So my concern is around the additional grade and the runoff from that. And where is that going to go? The other concern is around the road. I know there is some concern around having all the trucks and construction vehicles going through Bridle Road, but Misty Meadow Road is a gravel road and it can't handle the heavy equipment that, that would be required to go in through there. So that was another concern that we have. The other thing is it's a three-way easement or a three-way right-of-way. So what happens when the property, so the third, the third person or the third family was a Hennessy family? What happens to that right-of-way with a three-way? Does it just become two? How is that handled? The other question I have is when Lot Nine is, whatever happens to it, the final outcome, what happens to Misty Meadow? Does it become a town road? Who maintains it? There are two culverts that need to be repaired. One is right by our house. It floods quite often and we need, we're stranded in our, at our house because we have to bring in equipment to fix it. So those, those are my concerns. Okay?
Thank you.
I can speak very briefly to the. I can speak very briefly to the three-way easement would continue. The easement, or the maintenance agreement is between the three landowners that use Misty Meadow, and it would then go with the land, and therefore, the, basically, the homeowners association that would take over the six lots would be the third party to that easement, and Misty Meadows would stay as-is.
Okay, so they'd be responsible for a road they won't be using?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Carol Kivlin Comans, Thirty-four Abbott Lane, Chelmsford. I'd like to follow up on what that woman was talking about. Growing up in town, this has always been considered a beautiful piece of property, and we all respected the privacy of this property. I guess Joan could attest to it, I don't imagine many people drive down Misty Meadow Road. It's always been that way. So, my question is, if lot nine goes to conservation, and it is presently privately owned, can I assume that if townspeople are allowed to use that property, that the town will then acquire the ownership of this private land, so that people have access to get into that property? Or, does it stay a private road? And then, what Katie was just saying, the people assume the responsibility for owning that property? And how do you keep townspeople out, once it's under our domain?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
This is McLaren Harris on the seven Bridle Road, abiding the property under discussion here. As far as bringing in Phil, probably most of you are somewhat familiar with the area around Bridle Road. It's like, unless, there's only one straight-line access to Bridle Road, and that's Thomas Drive down from Old Westford. Any other route is going to send heavy trucks through densely populated residential neighborhoods, twisting and turning and back and forth. So, that's kind of a limiting factor as far as trucking goes. The other thing I was going to bring up was the drainage issue, which has a long history, as Barry said. When we moved in there, and I'm one of the original owners, so I've lived there since 1966, when we moved in there, there didn't seem to be a problem, or very rarely so. When the sewers went in, well, let me back up a minute. The houses were built with perimeter drains around these foundations, and they were drained through pipes into the storm drain in the street. When the sewers were put in, all of those pipes were cut. We brought that to the attention of the DPW, and they refused to admit that there had ever been any pipes connecting to the storm drain, but we know there were. So, that's contributed greatly to the flooding problems and all of the sump pumps that had to be installed. Only two properties on Bridle Road escaped that burden, and that's number eight, because the house is set up considerably above the street, and number seven, my own house. And the only thing that saved me from the trouble was that we have a straight-line drain from the cellar perimeter drain down to an easement on the side of my property. When we had, when we lived there for about two months, we got a visit from Bob Hicks, who you may recall is a very tall man, who came to us one night, and he said, "I should have brought you this request before. Too much stuff's been happening, so I'm late, but would you please sign this grant of an easement on your property for the storm drain off the street?" It's a twenty-foot-wide easement that runs along the side of the property from the street and into a junction box with a manhole cover, and then empties underneath the stone wall onto the property that we're talking about. And that is the only thing that has kept every drop of water out of my cellar for the whole fifty years. I'm very fortunate that way, and my concern is, I don't want to be, see that disturbed at all. I want to make sure that that is clear and free-flowing forever. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Anybody? I mean, we, our plan here is to continue this public hearing, because I think there's a lot of work to be done. Go ahead, go ahead, Katie.
No, I was just, I was just hoping for some clarification as to what we're doing prior to the next meeting. Certainly, we have conservation next week. I heard that we would like to have a written response to the different letters that were submitted this evening, which we can certainly do. And that's fine, as far as a written response, and we can have initial conversations with the Conservation Commission next Tuesday evening about the conservation restriction and the use of the open space, and whether or not they'd be willing to hold the conservation restriction moving forward, and help us with the language there. Was there any additional information that you were looking for?
I, well, there might be one or two pieces. I think that the letters from the abutters have captured a great, great deal of it. You have anything?
Yeah, I was looking for it in the plans that are online. I'd like to see the covenants, a copy of the covenants for Misty Meadow Lane, I guess it's called. And I would like to see a better delineation in your plan, I guess it's locust plan, or I don't know which one you want to put it in, of the road, basically, Misty Meadow Lane. Because what we're leaving here is, we're leaving, they're already landlocked, the people, forgot the name, I apologize, but they appear to be landlocked, but we're really going to make them landlocked. So, that's a concern, is, I want to see the covenants, I want to see a better delineation of the right-of-way they have, the Pine Hill Road.
Okay, we're not discontinuing it, it's existing conditions, but I should color it a different color if it makes it easier to see.
No, I should put the words, I like words like "right-of-way."
Okay.
You know, I like words like that on a plan that we're going to sign off on at some point. It's just, a lot of stuff is going to go on here, and since this development is going to be sold to a developer, a lot of stuff will, things may change, and I want to get as much down on paper as possible. That's what, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'll cut myself off at that.
Very good.
May I raise one quick question?
What's that?
Would it be possible to specify a single developer, Katie, as opposed to multiple?
No.
No, not at this time.
Because if you have multiple developers, and the work is chunked and so forth, this land goes into different stages.
The decision, the decision, as the board knows, the decision will, in the performance bonds and the lot releases, that whole process will provide adequate protection, because remember, this is being proposed as a town-owned road, so the town has a lot more interest in making sure that things are done properly. Secondly, the town's interest is protecting the future homeowners, the future residents that are going to purchase those homes. So, we do have procedures that will refresh the board and refresh the public.
Keep things sane.
It's all very predictable, meaning houses aren't allowed to be built and/or occupied until all the infrastructure serving that house is in place, up until binder. So, that's a very, that's a very kind of well-worn-out process that we have in place, it's worked very well.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay.
So, I guess I missed it, I'm sorry, but this is a public way?
It's not. Misty Meadow is not, Misty Meadow...
No, 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 I'm on Bridle path.
Bridle.
Bridle.
Bridle Road.
Bridle is being proposed to meet with the subdivision rules and regulations, so it could be requested to be turned over to the town at some point in the future.
Okay, so you're going to have this as a public way? Okay.
So, that will be fully bonded?
Yeah.
Covenanted, lot releases.
Yeah, I had missed that at the beginning.
Which we just, we need some documentation, as you're requesting from them on the existing conditions.
That doesn't change my concerns about Misty Meadow Lane.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
One further question. I presume that this development is going to take place piecemeal? That is, the lots will be sold individually, the developers will be chosen individually, and the schedule of the construction will be decided individually? So, it's not all going to be like a three or four-month period?
No, we don't know that, and as Evan just stated, we have to, the road has to be built, and the drainage, and the utilities have to be put in prior to lot releases. So, essentially, the road will have to be constructed to a certain amount of completeness before a lot will even be released. So, most likely, the road will be built to binder with utility stubs out to each of the lots. The first lot will probably be built, or one of the lots will probably be built while that is happening, and potentially, the lots thereafter will either be built by the same developer, or they could be sold individually, but it would have to be after the road was built. So, it couldn't be done piecemeal in a way that they can't just build a portion of the road and sell that house that's on that portion. They have to build the road all the way to the end.
And the fill, will the, the raising of the level of each lot would all be done same operation, one operation?
That could be done individually, and the reason, a lot of what's been discussed here tonight is the reason we're bringing Phil in. As you've heard tonight, a lot of the houses that were built on Bridle were built in the water table, which is essentially why their basements are flooding. So, we did soil testing pretty extensively on the parcel, on the areas that we're looking to develop, and we made sure each of those basements was out of the water table, so that we don't have to worry about the problems that are happening on Bridle, with the foundation drains, with sump pumps. Essentially, those houses are in the water, which is essentially why the problem is so prevalent.
The board can regulate the sequencing of the construction.
Right. Okay. All right. This looks like it may be a good point for us to continue.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, as you request, to continue the public hearing on the...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. To September twenty-sixth on Misty Meadow Lane development.
I'll second it.
All right, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Colleen, I'm back.
Thank you.
Yep. The record show that he's back.
Okay.
All right. Now, I want to quickly jump into the Route Forty Study Committee, this will be fairly quick.
They're my engineers. They work on here.
For some reason, I don't have any of those papers.
I think that's yours, too.
Who's stealing my stuff?
Yup.
Okay. As those who were at the last big meeting will recall, we decided a couple of things. One was that we didn't want to bring or have a zoning article on Route Forty brought to Fall Town Meeting, and the, my understanding is that the selectmen have pulled that from the warrant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not going to happen this fall, which gives us some time to work on this with some consideration. I put out the call for people to volunteer to be on this committee, and boy, did we get a bunch, more than I can possibly use, without having the committee really get out of control. But I did go through, and I did pick a committee, and I see some of them here tonight. First, from the planning board, Don and Nancy will be on the committee, and is Emily here from the selectman? I thought she was.
She stepped on.
Well, she'll step back in, well, she, I think she knows anyway, I talked to her on the phone this afternoon. So, that's representation of the town boards. Virginia? Yep? If you could be on it, that would be great. You live on Lovett, right? And Mike? Mike, where is he? Not here.
Please put her on.
Fine, yes, he had said he would.
Mike, can you just give me the addresses, just?
Yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you all the material.
Okay.
Pam Armstrong, you here, Pam? I don't know if she's here tonight, but she applied, and she's over on Scotty Hollow. And Nancy Gillies? You here? Great, and you actually live up on, up on...
I live on Grotten Road.
And I wanted to, I have a committee that kind of represented everybody. What I'd like to do, I think I have enough information from the applications to get email for everybody, and I'd like to set up the meetings as soon as we can. Here's my thought. If we can get done by December, that would be a very good thing, because I'd like us to have a solid proposal that can go to the town for April Town Meeting, you know, whatever it is, without a lot of last-minute, you know, jumping around. It's very nice to have the article that hits the floor at Town Meeting be exactly what's printed in all the documentation, and that would be a good thing. So, that's my hope. So, I'll contact everybody, probably tomorrow, tonight or tomorrow, and I'll send a list over to you, Colleen, with the addresses and the emails and everything, and to you as well, Evan. And then we'll get on it. I think many people would agree, perhaps most, that something is called for up there on that area, but it's got to be something that suits the town, suits the residents, and, you know, suits us going forward. So, with that said, thank you for all the people, and thank you to the people who sent us applications that I just couldn't fit on the committee. Remember, these meetings will be, will be public, and you don't necessarily need to be a committee member to come listen in. So, again, thank you very much, yes?
Do you really think four residents is enough to be on the committee?
If I put any more on, we're going to have so many people on there that the committee itself will become unmanageable.
How do you feel about four residents being on the committee? Is that right, everybody? Thanks.
And, as I said, others are certainly welcome to come, you know, to participate at some level, and I'm kind of hoping that you will. Yeah, go ahead.
I would also remind folks that you can be representative of the other residents.
Yeah.
So, there is no reason why, if you are not on the committee, that you can't commit with your friend who is on the committee. There is absolutely no reason that members of the committee cannot come representing the point of view of a large number of people. So, I would encourage you to stay involved, and stay working with the member of the committee that you feel most comfortable with, so that you can be heard, and it's not shutting anyone out, it's just simplifying the discussions that happen in a committee.
Yeah, thanks, Emily. And one other note, I plan to be there, but I'm not going to be running this committee. I'm going to, I'm going to serve it sort of ex officio, if you will. And so, the committee will wind up getting a chairman somehow, and I have a couple of ideas who might be good at it. So, thank, yes?
I have a question.
Sure.
When does mine start?
You want to get up, and just identify yourself, so we have you in the record. You wanna get up and, and just identify yourself so we have you in the record?
I, I'm still Kim Bennett. I'm still at Twenty-Five Lovett Lane.
Yeah.
Until my husband throws me out for spending so much time outside of the home in the evenings. So many of the residents brought up the point, and I believe you did also, Nancy, about studies. What are we doing about, you know, noise, school systems, traffic, and all that kind of stuff? So my question is, is about the timing. You're hoping for end of December, that's two and a half months. What expectations do you have about studies being involved to help come to the right approach?
I'll be honest, quite limited. And the reason is that studies of the sort that you're talking about are, are things that generally go with a specific development plan. We do not have a specific development plan, nor do we gonna, gonna, I hope, conduct this committee with a sense that there is a specific development in mind. This is quite a bit more general.
So then my second question is, will this subcommittee have the ability to access people who are in charge of things like the sewer system at the, in the location, the water department, which is North Chelmsford Water, school department officials?
If, if...
How much access will we have to other people?
Well, if we, if you need to, we will get it. But again, I want to keep us from getting into areas that would more traditionally be involved with the approval of a very specific project. We don't have a specific project in front of us.
So general questions could be brought to certain town committees and officials?
And folks are wonderful at, at answering questions like that for us, and I'm sure they will.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, just let me know who you are.
My name is Jerry Hall. I'm at Thirty-Four Lovett Lane. I would like to personally thank you all for slowing the process down. I think it's important to do that, and I appreciate it. I think nice selection on the people that you asked for your committee. And on the topic of studies, I went down to the North Chelmsford Water Board and asked them if there had been any studies, and they told me that in early, late April, early May, that Mr. Cox had started the study.
Yeah.
And that someone in town government asked him to stop it because the plan wasn't approved yet.
Yeah, there's no plan, no approvable plan.
So, there hasn't been an attempt to do some studies. I know he was going to be before them, but they had June third or fourth meeting, and he canceled.
Okay.
So, I think studies are important. I hope we get some feel for what should be going on there. Again, thank you. I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for the support. I mean, the, the number of applications that I got was, was pretty heartwarming. I'm very glad that so many people are interested. Good.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, Emily, yeah, she's Board of, Board of Selectmen.
I'll be really quick. I just wanted to clarify my understanding of it. This, this is more of like a, a visioning exercise, right?
It's, it's, it's visioning to the point of, if reasonable, and I think it may be, coming up with a proposal for zoning. Not a proposal for project, a proposal for zoning.
Right.
Right.
So, okay, that was my understanding, too. So I, I mean, you know, inasmuch as I, as a Board of Selectmen person, have any weight to ask more questions, I can do that as well as...
You can do it, yeah.
As a member. It's amazing what happens when you place a phone call and you're like, hi, I'm on the Board of Selectmen.
It does work, doesn't it?
People are like, oh, can I help? And I'm like, yes, this is great, yeah. So I, I can get, I can get information, just not crazy studies, but I can get a lot of information, so.
And we will, we'll get to work on this, and I would like us to have our first meeting next week, if it's possibly doable, because it's gonna take at least four, and it may take one or two more than that.
Yeah, I would like to move quickly, too, because we've got another committee coming up that I need to be on.
Okay.
That is gonna take a while to ramp up, but then once it gets going, I wanna get that through, too.
Good. So those of you on the committee, thank you for, for volunteering to serve, and I will be in touch with you as soon as I can. Okay, that is the Route Forty Study Committee. Next up, new business. Now, Evan, before I, I get into this, discussion of animal accessories to dwellings. Is, seeing as this is actually a zoning article proposal, is this in fact a public hearing?
No.
Or is it not, or is this strictly?
You closed the public hearing and you voted your recommendation.
Okay.
Your, 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 your vote from the twenty-ninth
Covers...
is in the signed warrants that the Board of Selectmen signed on Monday night.
Okay, good.
So, so procedurally, the only way that that particular article can be amended at this point
Right.
is on the Town Meeting floor.
Okay.
So I think, I, my understanding as to why the Board of Health reached out to the Planning Board at this point was to see if there was an ability, interest, desire, willingness to come to some sort of mutual agreement and understanding so that there was a friendly amendment, or the Planning Board amended their own article and Tommy.
And I, and I know there has been some discussion with Board of Health, some emails in particular. And I think, well, you've been involved as anybody with that.
Yeah, I actually have. I, so we did receive a, a letter of comment from the Board of Health. It was in response to a draft that had been circulated that was not the final verbiage that we approved.
That, that letter's in your packet, I believe.
That's right. So the, the verbiage has changed since then. There were a number of ambiguities in, in the script that she was reviewing and commented on. That said, there, I have done responses to her, and I've also done responses to a letter that was circulated to Town Meeting reps in concern of the same, same issue. So the, the feedback that I provided was, the, the cons, the major concern is that the minimum lot size has been removed. And the feedback that I provided to the letters that I was sent was that the clearance from adjacent properties and the clearance from bodies of water have not been modified. The overall density per acreage has not been modified. And the controls on the impacts on the neighbors are controlled not by the size of the lot, but by the proximity to the adjacent lots and to the overall density. Neither one of which has changed. The... I, I guess my comment is that if you have chickens that are fifty feet away from your property, it doesn't matter if they're on a half acre lot, or if they're on a five acre lot. They're still fifty feet from your property, and it's not a lot size issue. So, um... I, I'm having some frustration around, I, I understand that one of our neighborhoods has some serious problems that is being attributed to an unregistered flock of chickens. But I'm hesitant to make zoning regulations based on one incident of failure to control, control feedstuffs and, and refuse.
I'd like to jump in here, Mr. Chairman.
Please do.
Just happens to be in my neighborhood where I'm a Town Meeting member. Basically, you have a rat infestation.
Yes.
Let's get down to it. It's a rat infestation. I'm gonna, maybe you can call me wrong when you, if you read the memo. But basically, four houses around where they're attributing the chickens as being the draw, or the chicken feed as being the draw to the rats, have caught at least seventy-nine rats in the last couple of months. So I don't know if that was on an email that was circulated to you.
Yes, it was.
Circulate all the Town Meeting members in that district. I've also had the opportunity to bump into, on an unofficial basis, and talk to some people associated with the Plan, with the Board of Health. And, yeah, I can understand where you get into the fifty feet and all of that stuff. But I think they have a hard time interpreting a lot of that, and it's much easier for them to interpret fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, forty thousand. That's, that's, you know, they don't have to be drawing plans of chicken coops and all of that and seeing how far in from the lot it is. So, the sense I get is that people want us to go back to the twenty, at least, and maybe not touch anything at all. Okay, and what I would recommend is that before any further action or decisions is taken, we get Sue Rosa right here at a Planning Board meeting either at the end of September or the first of Octo, early October, when she comes back from sick leave, and see what she wants to, because this is, it's starting to affect about four streets right now that I know of. And they're seeing a significant infestation.
Okay.
Not to say that we're on TV today.
Yeah.
I heard.
For that, yeah. So it's not the way we want to be known.
Okay.
But, so that's, that's my recommendation, is that we sort of let the Board of Health guide us in this. I know, I'm not a chicken expert by any stretch, and it's the last thing in the world I want to become. So, yeah, you can laugh, I was making a joke. But, but seriously, I think we need to really rethink opposition. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'll make a, a mathematical observation, which is that, well, I'll make another observation as well, which is this is apparently an unregulated, unpermitted chicken coop.
Correct.
That in and of itself is a problem, and it's not a zoning problem.
The person is being fined already.
Good.
Heavily.
Good.
Heavily.
Good. And so that, that piece has been take, has been looked at, and I'm glad that it has been. But I will say that coming up with a place to put a chicken coop and a chicken yard on a piece of property and maintain fifty foot from the borders gets really problematic if your lot gets less than twenty thousand square feet. And just draw it out and try to do that. Now, you could say twenty thousand square feet if you wanted, but frankly, I think the, the fifty foot limit is probably more than adequate. I, you try it on a ten thousand square foot lot, you can't do it, not and have a house. Even twenty thousand square feet, you know, only if the house is way in the front and the chicken coop is basically in the living room. So, you know, practically speaking, I'm not sure that, that worrying much about that particular number in this bylaw is, is terribly important. What's way more important is that, that flocks like this get permitted, and we have a mechanism for permitting them, and that if there is a problem, that the, the owners are held accountable. And I think that's, that piece is not really in our, in our bailiwick.
It is in the sense that the Planning Board proposal
Right.
opens up the opportunity to a much greater extent than the Board of Health opportunity did.
What, by just reducing the lot size?
Oh, yeah. You, you eliminated it.
Yeah.
You, the Planning Board proposal allows the first ten on any lot size.
But it, but practically speaking, you can't do it.
I understand.
Because of the clearance requirements that are already embedded and haven't changed.
Yeah.
That in itself is self-regulated.
Well, fifteen thousand square feet is probably the minimum you could ever, ever do it on.
I think the problem you've run into here is, I agree with you. Buckman has nothing to do with the zoning proposal.
Yeah.
No.
Buckman is now, just, it's part, it's part of the, the discussion. But the problem you have with zoning, whether it's, in this particular case, is you're providing a greater opportunity. And while, while you're saying that the Board of Health permit is the safety net, the problem with that is, is you can't regulate stupidity.
Right, unfortunately not. You try all the time, and, yeah.
Mike, can I?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're the agriculture expert.
Since we had, you know, I grew up with ten thousand chickens. The problem is, on a small lot, is you pass this, the, the chickens may stay in a certain spot, but everything else goes a distance from them. I mean, we, we've had rat infestation problems in the past, and we were able to take care of them, but we have a large piece of property. We could do a lot, we could do a lot. The problem now is... Yeah?
I used to question, because I've got chickens on my farm, that's where you should be zoning.
I have, I have four, I have forty acres.
I know, I know right where you are, I know.
You know, we, we, we had some room to do it. The problem is here, is you, the, the, the first infestation takes in probably six or seven, and it just keeps going. I mean, I've done everything from setting the, you know, the buckets of water out with the seed in them and everything else, and it doesn't, doesn't put enough of a dent in the population. You gotta get pretty, pretty fierce on it. I honestly think we should take and listen to Sue Rosa, and if we make a friendly amendment and just move on with it. I mean, I don't, I don't think this is worth, you know, the problem is, is some, it's not the chickens, it's the feed that people give them to chickens that they're not taking protecting the stuff. And the problem, now as soon as these chickens are taken away, the rats aren't gonna leave. They're gonna go, they eat through plastic trash cans, they eat through, they'll go eat through the siding of your house, they'll eat through what anything if they're gonna get the food. You have to keep, it's, it's, you have to be vigil on it. And I, I can feel your pain. I, I've been there. But, you know, there, there are ways to do it, and good luck. Hopefully get all the neighbors together, and you can do some things over there that will control them. It happens. And I, I think the Board of Health being involved in it's not a bad thing.
Oh, I'm glad they're there.
You know, I just don't, I don't think the, the lot size has, if, this is, that's the problem. The problem isn't not with the chickens, it's the rats don't take and recognize that property line.
Yeah, they know nothing about it.
They care less.
No, I, I do agree with that, and, and what Henry just said, and, and taking it to the Board of Health and having Sue come in and, and maybe educate us, because that was a piece that was missing when, when we voted on this bylaw. But I'm wondering, Henry, from your experience, I definitely understand what, what Mike and, and Nan are saying regarding the, the fifty foot setback and the amount of land that's required to have chickens, but what about the number of chickens? Does that matter? I mean, if you, ten, eight, six, four, I mean, doesn't matter? With, with the infestation problem they have, the problem is, is chickens don't overeat. You can leave grain out, and chickens will self-feed themselves all day long. We used to always have grain available for them. And, you know, if the grain's out there, they're gonna go for it. Now, years ago, we, we started putting all our grain in fifty-five gallon drums because they're solid. No matter how much a rat chews on it, he's not gonna get through it. But if we put in a trash pile down there, they'd be through it in a minute, in a heartbeat.
You can't use plastic.
You can't use plastic for storage.
So I think, I think this could very easily be done by just getting her in here.
Yeah.
Ash out. I, I don't, I don't think the lot size is worth the headache that we're, we're gonna cause over it.
Just invite more infestations if you have a lot size and let everybody do it.
I don't think, I don't think the lot, I just don't think lot size is gonna change it.
To be honest, to be honest, I would do the belt suspenders, leave the fifty feet, put the lot size in there.
Yeah, I'm all for that.
And then they got two different ways that they have to take a measure to figure it out, and makes it even harder.
I think the lot size adds clarity, and it also adds a quick measure. If you're on Zillow and you look up a lot size, it will tell you.
Emily, can you, I'm sorry.
Nobody can hear her.
Emily, can you take the microphone?
So I think the, the argument for having the lot size there is that it adds extreme clarity. You can go on zillow.com and look up a lot size, and you can see, mine, for example, has only eight thousand five hundred square feet, thereabouts. But I think that my deck is actually almost fifty feet from all of my neighbors' houses. So if my neighbors don't, you know, tell on me, I could probably put a chicken coop on my deck and still be, so, so the problem...
We're saying from the property line, not from...
For the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Chickens to property line.
Pretty close, if I have it on my deck. I'm just saying, I'm just saying. So, and, and I'm just saying that, you know, I, it, twenty thousand square feet, I, you need the clarity. You need, you need the clarity. And it is, it is a, it, it may seem redundant, but it adds that point of clarity. And the other thing is, is that these folks cannot wait for Sue Rosa to get back. Like, she's, she's a wonderful person, but you've gotta have some sort of backup medical person who can come in and, and, and give you advice on this. person who can come in and, and, and give you advice on this, and, and give you the research that you need to...
Well, that, unfortunately, we can't do with the zoning law.
Okay.
They're gonna have to send somebody up here.
Yeah.
And it's too bad that Sue's out of town, or it is, it's on, on leave, rather.
It is, I just, you know, I, I think, I think when these, these, these bylaws are written, there, there has to be some scientific research behind them.
But no, nothing's gonna be done until town meeting.
Right.
No matter what is done, we're gonna have a friendly, we'll have an amendment.
Yeah, we'll deal with it then.
Yeah, so have, have a friendly amendment right there, and, because I think I, we, obviously the board hasn't discussed it, but given, you know, the rumblings, I suspect that we're not gonna recommend that amendment as written. So, just, I mean, just because it's not, it's not clear. And I know I personally couldn't, just because that, that, that added, that added dimension makes it crystal clear. And so, it's not about, you know, running around with tape measures and yardsticks on your lawn, it's, it's, it's that quick, 20,000 square feet, okay, I got it.
I think, I think, I think you're gonna end up with both.
You need both.
It's fine with both. Well, the 50 foot's in there anyway. That's already there.
You gotta have the clearance.
I'm not arguing against clearance, I'm not arguing against clearance, I'm arguing for the limited square footage. You need to have both, both numbers there.
Body, that's...
It's currently 40,000 square feet, so... Because people want chickens. There's a chicken lobby. Have you seen the ones in Somerville? That's the argument right there.
Hey, if you want...
Come on up.
It's not an open meeting, but I will...
No, don't.
Don't let him say his thing. He's already started it.
I, I think they, I think John Christensen, John Christensen, Burning Tree Lane, also have a couple other houses in town, and I hate to see them dropping them. Glad I'm not in the, in the part where the rats is. I had a couple over in the Westlands, but nothing there. I think that it goes to the comment law, or I'm guessing there's enough people, if they see what is going on here, I have a feeling they'd probably get enough votes to put this on a ballot, vote to have the chickens put on a farm and taking care of somebody that knows how to take care of them. That's where I believe they belong. But if you, if you're gonna change the comment law, I have a feeling there's gonna be enough people upset to go and try to change this.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, my name's Ed Buckley.
Hold, hold on a minute here.
You opened it up.
No, I, I, I just, I just have a couple of quick questions on Article 17, as it was drawn up, and
Yeah, that's fair enough.
and voiced my opposition against it. I said this during the selectmen's meeting, and does any selectman here live in the Westlands?
Yeah.
The guy behind you.
Zoning, I mean, plant, uh, planning board, right? Well, we're a pretty densely populated neighbor, wouldn't you say? And I could take a 50-foot rule and go from Dottie's house to my house and 50 feet from, from the Golden Cove Brook, and they could put a chicken coop right in the middle where they, where they have with 20,000 square feet. But my, I, my, what I want to let you guys know on the board is, by doing this, by taking the 40,000 square feet and taking it down to 15, that's dramatic. You're gonna open up 85 to 95% of the town people, if they want chickens.
To chickens, right.
They're gonna get chickens. And with that, you can come some problems. And it only takes one negligent chicken owner
Yeah, as we've seen.
to put you in trouble. And I, I'd like to know who, who sponsored this warrant article?
I'll, I'll give the, I'll give the history.
It was requested by the Board of Health.
The, the Board of Health back in, where's my email here? Back in July 26th.
Yeah.
Sent, it was, it was, it was, it was identified as a, as an item that was on a list of potential warrant articles. The next day, the Board of Health forwarded a proposal.
Right. The Board, the Board of Health did this.
I can't, I can't, I can't tell you why.
Right, right.
When Sue comes in, she can explain, okay?
All right.
Just trying to give you, in the public...
I'd be smart, Mike, to hold this whole thing off till Sue gets here. Yeah, I think that makes sense. That we won't have to answer them tonight and answer them... Yeah, we, 'cause we can't really answer them. We don't know why. We don't have the answers, not on this job.
On the 29th, I mean, in fairness to all you, some of you guys laughed, they thought it was funny, chickens, you know?
I was trying to explain that.
I'm sure, I'm sure, but it's not funny to us.
Planning board didn't, didn't follow the Board's, the Board of Health proposal. The planning board came up their own.
The Board of Health never explained that to me.
Okay.
I thought there was a specific person.
The Board of Health proposal was to reduce it from 40 to 20. They drew a line in the sand at 20. Yet, that was totally separate from what is going on on Buckman Drive.
No.
They were not connected at the time.
If we have chicken owners that are out of code, don't get permits, two wrongs don't make a right.
No, they don't, they don't.
You know, and I just, I mean, it's 40,000 square feet. I mean, good lord, we could have a chicken explosion. If the West, if every house in the Westlands decided to have chickens, you'd smell us from Chelmsford Center, and it wouldn't take many bad, it'd take a few negligent chicken owners to do that.
Yeah.
You know, people, we got kids, and the rats, we know this, we're overrun.
It may end up that there is no change.
Yeah.
We never had, by the way, we never had a rat. I've been there 27 years, Dottie's been here for 41, we have other neighbors 50-some-odd years. Never saw a rat till the chickens came. Now, they were dumping the feed down by the brook.
That's...
What?
Yes. There was chicken feed being dumped by the wheelbarrows behind the shed near the brook.
Oh, brother.
That brought in the rats.
That'll do it.
I thought, I thought you might have known this from the last selectmen's meeting.
No.
No, no. Now, they stopped dumping behind the brook.
But that's not a zoning issue. I am appalled at that, but that's not a zoning issue.
Well, it's, like I said, one negligent chicken owner can have a nightmare, and we are overrun.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna tell you, now they're putting it out in the trash. Now, the rats, they put the chicken feed in the poop
Yeah.
in the trash. And the chickens, and, and the rats eat chicken poop.
Of course.
Along with the grain. So, a perfect storm, we're in a perfect storm.
Yep, you are.
And it's not good. And I think keep it at 40, we're gonna fight to keep it at 40, we're gonna go to town meeting, we've notified every town meeting rep we have, and we're gonna fight this and fight it and fight it. That's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, at this point, I think we, we need to get Sue in from the Board of Health. And I don't think we can have a useful conversation, because we don't have the information. So, when's she expected back?
Um, I'm not sure she had shoulder surgery.
Yeah, I know, she's, she's been laid up.
The ton of her emails is, seems to me that she's not coming back in a timely manner.
Yeah. That concerns me.
She was emailing with you, and she basically said she couldn't be here.
Right, is there anybody else that can, that can respond?
You know, my, my suggestion is, in lieu of her actually coming here,
Yeah.
you make a, you, you, among yourselves, you make a public statement that whatever the Board of Health agrees is what you're gonna support.
Okay, well, if they said, if they said 20...
She's returning the end of September.
Huh?
She's returning the end of September.
End of September, okay. Well, at, at this point, we're locked in with the item and the warrant, so any change that's gonna be made to it has to be made as an amendment.
On the floor.
And we can certainly do that. I don't think there's any reason not to. No, it's going.
It's going to town meeting.
The question is, does it get...
It's going, but it could be, it could be amended. It could be withdrawn.
Which is the other thing, is we could do the same thing as we did with Fruit 40.
Yeah, we could.
Pull it and take it to the spring town meeting.
Yeah, we could.
Leave it as it is.
I like that idea. Yeah, me too.
So, what happened Monday night was, the Board of Selectmen, I believe, asked the Board of Health representative if and when the Board of Health, the three elected commissioners were going to meet, to then they could give direction to professional staff. I believe that's the next step that needs to take place.
Yeah, sounds like it to me.
Which is Monday, yeah.
Right, right now, right now, Article 17 is a planning board-sponsored article. So, if, if the discussions with the planning board and the Board of Health turn out to withdraw it, so be it. If it's a friendly amendment, so be it.
All right.
That's what the public is looking for, is what is, what is going to happen.
So, you say the Board of Health is meeting on Monday? Let's see what they have to say. Good. All right. And I'm not gonna take any more comment at this point. I understand that.
It's not a, it's not a public...
We're going to have to wait for the Board of Health to act.
I would like to just make one small comment, if possible. These are, these are based on false allegations, they shouldn't just be counted as fact.
I understand that.
They've been investigated, and we're being thrown through the mud in, on media, on the news, and it's very hurtful. We're human beings, we're people, so we should be held accountable.
We don't, we don't, we don't take care of that.
We don't, this, this is not our territory. This is not our territory, this goes to the Board of Health. No, not at this point.
Not, this board doesn't have any jurisdiction over yours.
Yeah, we, there's nothing we can do about it.
There's nothing we can do about it.
Yes, right.
That's so...
You should, you should attend Monday night's Board of Health.
Yes, that's where you need to go. Yes. That's it. I want to, I want to be finished off with the Board of Health.
We were talking remotely about zoning.
Right.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. What do we got next up? I think we're almost done.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
September 26th, I think it says, right?
26th. You'll have the, the final zoning article, public hearing will open on the 26th.
Right.
As the board indicated, they want the proponent to appear.
Yep.
They are scheduled to appear
Right.
to make a presentation. We'll also be notifying the town meeting reps in that precinct of the, of the public hearing.
Okay. No, I just wanna figure out what we're gonna do. That, that will be our last look at zoning. That will be after the Board of Health meeting, so we can take into account whatever information is derived from that, and I think we really need to hear from them, one way or another.
Can we ask Evan to ask him for a recommendation written?
Yeah, sure.
I think we should send representation to that meeting.
I think that's perfectly reasonable. Anybody here wanna go?
I'll volunteer.
Okay. Anybody else? We don't wanna have more than four of us, 'cause that becomes a meeting in its own right.
Yeah, I think all you need is Nan.
Yeah, okay. Why don't, why don't you go Monday and see what's going on? And maybe we can understand from them what they think is going on. Okay. That covers it.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Bye.